Yep. Oops. Uh, nothing. Yeah, you push. Is it green? Nope, um, we might need a sister, maybe the the little button on the back. There we go.
There we go.
Alright, um, yeah, no, just go ahead with your presentation and I'll take it from there.
Oh, well, the, is the presentation going to be shown on the screen? Okay, thanks, and then I'll step back a little so I can see what slides we have here. So, thank you very much commissioners and city staff for the opportunity to share about the San Benito Agricultural Land Trust in your community and the work that we do. Okay, next slide. Oh, thank you, that helps. So briefly, the agenda, I'll talk about what, who Espault is, the importance of agriculture locally and statewide, now our programs, how we intersect with cities and counties, and benefits of agriculture in our communities, and then the current activities I want to tell you a little bit about. Okay. So we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, we were incorporated in 1993, and we presently preserve farmland, rangeland, and open space for everybody as a permanent preservation effort. They, we received national accreditation a couple of years ago for which we're extremely proud. We protect seventy-three hundred acres predominantly in this county with a little spillover into other counties. So, the reason, yeah, go ahead and, um, next slide. So just some background on how important agriculture is, which many of you are already very familiar. So California produces more than a third of the country's vegetables. California produces nearly three quarters of our country's fruits and nuts. Twenty percent of the US agricultural production is exported. Economic multipliers estimate that for each million dollars of production, there is another two point six million in adjacent benefit economic value. Using that, San Benito County's three hundred fifty million dollar crop value in the 2022 report would be a um, it's, it's definitely the number one job producer in the county. Multiple public and environmental benefits, agriculture and food processing, is, is, uh, local economic value and employment, maintaining ecosystems and open space because a lot of our rangeland also is supporting endangered species in our vision. We have aquifer recharge within the irrigation and all the different floodplains that we have, and we have climate change mitigation. If, I would love to send this report to you guys, well, you'll have it on your computer, so you can have this because we have the sources included so that you can reference them. Okay, next slide. So in California, over one point six million acres of agricultural land in California has been converted to non-agricultural lands since nineteen eighty-four. This is a rate of nearly fifty thousand acres annually or about one square mile every five days. There is a pie chart there that kind of shows whether it's prime land, farmland of statewide importance, or grazing land that's being converted, and that's other balance on the other side is just trying to um, represent that we've, we recognize the value of homes, of commercial, and it's just trying to find that balance where we're also protecting our agriculture. Okay. So locally in San Benito County, agriculture is the number one industry generating four thousand one hundred and seventy jobs. Population in our county grew by seventeen point eight percent from twenty twenty, twenty ten to twenty twenty, which was the fastest, second fastest county growth in this state, which is really amazing. There is enormous pressure to convert farmland to housing and commercial infrastructure to address local and Bay Area growth. Okay, so our programs at the San Benito Agricultural Land Trust, okay. We have conservation easements, and I'm not sure, um, if, do you guys, are you all familiar with a conservation easement is? Because I'm happy to go into more detail in the next slide if needed. We also do property acquisitions such as an island that you're very familiar with, Marantolarios. Mitigation for development projects, land use policy, we try to help and we've collaborated with you guys on these um, projects around here, and then public access through our ranch days, stuff like that. So I'll go in a little more detail on each one of those. Our conservation easements are always with a willing landowner who wishes to sell or donate their development value of their property. It's just like a PG&E easement, it will be a recorded deed that is reported with the county and goes with the title, so if they sell their property, that develop, that conservation easement remains on title with the land in perpetuity. Um, the development value in our area, the appraisers are finding that the farmland is around ten to twenty percent of the total value of the land. So if you had a piece of property that was valued at a hundred thousand dollars, that conservation easement would be ten to twenty thousand dollars. If it's rangeland, it's a higher percentage, thirty to fifty percent roughly is what we're finding. And, and we always have a professional appraisal, appraiser doing this work. The easement deed is recorded and it remains with the property, as I mentioned, okay? We also do acquisitions, so we hold free title to land as well. Then the San, when the Rancho Lario subdivision went in, the county donated all the open space that was part of the development agreement to the land trust back in two thousand and four, so we own five hundred and twenty acres there that we manage. We have a grazing lease on it. Most recently, last year in June, so just a little bit over a year, we received a donation from the Trust for Public Land who had purchased the Nyland property from the Nyland family. Uh, this is on the south side of the road, so we do not refer to that as the Nyland Ranch because uh, Matthew Manning owns the Nyland Ranch and his operation is referred to as the Nyland Ranch, so we want to respect that and not confuse things for his customers. So we refer to it as Nyland property, five hundred and forty acres. And, and then there's a few more projects that are in the pipeline that I can't speak about. And this gives us as a land trust firsthand experience so that when we're speaking with landowners who will put a conservation easement on their property perhaps, they will continue to be the owners and managers of those lands when we put an easement on there. Us owning and managing similar land gives us some credibility and just the experience ourselves of knowing what those landowners go through as operators of their property. So I think personally, I always feel very valuable for a land trust to own some land and have to get permits, etc., and go through a lot of the same things that landowners go through, okay? We're also involved in mitigation in this county, and I, who have spent my entire career working in land trusts in the stewardship side where I've been on the ground, this is new for me and for many of us. Uh, there are land trusts who specialize this, but there's a real need in this county for mitigation, so when the county and the cities, and I'm not positive about your policy here, but City of Hollister and the county both have a recommendation that when an acre of land is converted from agricultural production to some more intensive use, that any similar quality acre of land somewhere else be permanently preserved to a conservation easement or acquisition. Yeah, one to one, is that what you were saying there, Dan?
Yeah.
Sign language for one to one?
No multiplier?
I'm sorry?
There's no multiplier?
No multiplier, and, and there's also no requirement, so that's been part of what we've worked with the cities and the county about is saying, okay, we want it, the general plans recommend it, and they recommend creating a a code that would require that, but it never has gotten into the system. Now, City of Hollister started looking at two to one, but then more recently, the Planning Commission and the current board changed, or council changed that back to one to one. So, uh, unfortunately from our perspective, because we want to see more land conserved, so at one to one, that means we're forfeiting fifty percent of our agricultural land. You know, two to one is a third, you know, so, um, when, given the value of this land in this area, the soils, that's important, it's a big deal. But it's something for the community to decide, so we can step in when mitigation is required by one of the um, public agencies and accept the funds to go get a conservation easement or actually take the land, etc. And we can do that for farmland, and we're also doing it some with endangered species. Okay, sorry. In land use policy, we've been involved with you guys, some discussing sphere of influence, urban growth boundaries. The City of Hollister, we kind of explored ways, uh, they reached out to us and asked for our input and ideas in terms of the agricultural chapter in that pro, plan. And the San Benito County, they have just received a five hundred thousand dollar grant to write an agricultural element for their general plan, and we are sub-grantees for that, so we'll be assisting. And then the San Benito Economic Development Corporation, last year they did their update, their five-year update of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and we had a seat at that table from a land use perspective, and it was great, we, I was grateful to see that some of our ideas were captured in that plan. Then public access, that's the other thing that we try to do a little bit of, we're a very small organization, but we have these ranch days on the first Sunday of the month, so we can get people out on the land, and that's a very big deal here in this county because there is very little public access on lands, as you probably know from Reech's work, San Benito County Pub, uh, Parks Foundation, and so we have our ranch days once a month, and we have Martin Luther King Day of Service, and we try to get a post-Thanksgiving hike-in on Saturday morning after Thanksgiving, and people really enjoyed that. Okay. Okay, so how we intersect with cities and county? Just going a little more in depth on that, next slide. Uh, this slide discusses some of the issue that we've, uh, have discovered isn't a problem, so this is a map of the California Department of Conservation's Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program. It shows the dark green is prime farmland, then there's farmland of statewide importance, unique farmland and farmland of the local importance. Those four categories are all considered jointly the important farmland categories, and when when the cities or the county requests that a developer mitigate one to one, it is usually because within their general plan or their policies, it says if you convert one of these kinds of land types, you will mitigate one to one. It does not have that practice for grazing land. The problem is that this mapping program, uh, is designed to track the loss of farmland. That's what the state is trying to do, is keep track of how much farmland is coming out of production. And so, anytime there is no, farmland is not irrigated for a period of four years or more prior to a, an update in the mapping program, and I think this was in twenty eighteen, so from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, if a piece of land did not have irrigation on it during those four years or more, longer, it would come out of the status of important farmland and become, they just by default, they call it grazing land. So you can see some kind of, you know, that brown flesh-colored tone in the middle of farmland, and those soils are no different, they are still high-quality soils, the only thing that's different is that it hasn't been in production. And this has been, this is a loophole that can be used when someone wants to do a development, they just, during the time that they're working on their development plans, they stop producing, and then by the time they go to do the development, they no longer have to mitigate. So we're encouraging the, um, governments to modify their protocol of when mitigation is needed so that at least there is an overriding statement within the policy that says, or the Board of Supervisors or the City Council can within a reasonable, you know, within reason designate that the property is prime farmland and should be protected. So that's in some of the new ones, thank you, perfect. So, when you go through, when someone's doing a development project, they have to do the secret process, and there's always an element of there, in there about agriculture and the impact of agriculture. You guys are very familiar with this process, so optimally you want to avoid the impact to whatever the resource is, agriculture in this situation, minimize the impact, or if you can't avoid the impact, then you want to mitigate for it. Okay. Avoiding impacts in an effort to kind of keep this moving, um, you know, design the project so it doesn't impact the agriculture or encourage infill, that's I just want to draw attention to that because that became objective number two, be within the comprehensive economic development strategy. Okay, next. Minimize the impact, I am not going to read through all this, you guys can look at it later, but just minimizing impact to the agricultural land or mitigating impact, and we already discussed this some about the mitigation ratio one to one, Yolo County is the yeah, most, it's the highest I've been able to find in the, in the state, which is a three to one ratio. And, um, and I've read a lot of their policy, and, and that's where they kind of say, or you know, we can override it if we feel in our judgment that it really needs to be mitigated for and protected. Um, yeah, that's good, so benefits to agriculture and our communities. Um, there is benefits to the landowner because if they, if they do a conservation easement, they can generate some revenue potentially to put back into their operation. Uh, we've had landowners come to us who are just beginning farmers, and they want to buy land, but it's a little out of reach on price, and they will come to our county because it's the least expensive relative to Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, or Monterey, so they come here, still a little out of reach, if we could put that conservation easement, it could get it down to where new farmer could get in, and, and right now, our our farming community is like an average age of sixty, so we really want to encourage young farmers to get in on, on the land. It can, um, it allows people buy out partners, it can help with the succession planning, estate planning, etc. And then, of course, there's community benefits, there's financial support for local farmers and rasper, ranchers, so they can prosper. There is bringing fresh produce right here locally, it's all these jobs that are associated with the direct farming or ranching or the related industries that support it. Uh, open space that promotes health and recreation for the community and view sheds and, and the attraction to people, the indigenous culture, and we're very proud to have a cultural easement on the Nyland property held by the Amabutsan Land Trust that brings them in as partners, and then revenue through agricultural-based tourism, so lots of benefits to the community when we protect our agriculture, okay? So finally, I just want to quickly brought attention to a few activities that we're doing right now. Um, we are stabilizing the barn. Woo, yeah, yeah. We need another ten thousand bucks to make it happen, um, oh, you're the one, you're the one, okay, I'll keep that in mind, thank you, Jose, we really appreciate it. Thank you, um, we, thanks to John Nyland, he has contributed fifty thousand towards his seventy thousand dollar contract. We raised another ten thousand from donors, and we're looking for that final ten thousand. Uh, the gentleman that's doing the work, Peterson Ranch Construction, he has these stopping points, so if we can't raise the money, we can stop the process at those points, so you know, please spread the news, let people know that we're, we're, we're almost there. And, um, there's going, this coming Sunday is one of our ranch days, and for that ranch day, there's going to be a tour of the barn and what's happening there. Um, yeah, okay, so there, there was an update on the fundraising for that, on the next page. We are also involved with doing the San Benito Wildfire Resilience Program, this was a grant that went to the UC Cooperative Extension through the Coastal Commission and Cal Fire money before that. We are updating our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, that's a ten-year plan for the county, and we have to have projects on that to be able to go to Cal Fire for funding for those projects. That plan is currently out of date, so we were updating it, we are getting community involvement, we it's critical that people participate, this is, you get your next chance to participate is in ten years. So, there is a meeting coming up on July seventeenth at St. Francis Retreat for this general community, I'm going to leave you some of these flyers, and, uh, and dinner is included, so there you go, there's the incentive. That's on Wednesday, July seventeenth, six o'clock, at St. Francis Retreat. Um, yeah, and then there'll be other meetings in Trespinos, we believe, and then South County. And then we have the Foster Ranch Farm Tour coming up, and we've done this a few times in the past, and it's just really delightful, on one of the Saturdays, August twenty-fourth, after he closes the farm stand, we have two conservation easements on his ranch. Uh, he leads a farm tour, and about an hour and a half, you learn all about those methods and how he, the research he does on the property, etc., it's really nice. And then we finish up at their home for amazing food that his wife and her fellow schoolteachers create with the produce that they grow there on the property, so, um, I have there, it's limited to about twenty people for the farm tour, so I'll leave some of these flyers with you as well, and if you, I don't know if there's somewhere where you can put some of these at the, um, you know, for the public, but yeah, okay, cool, so, and this is some handouts, uh, fact sheets on the wildfire plan. I think that might be about it, let's see, let's find the next slide. Yes, there's our mission, thank you very much for your time, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners?
Yes, Liz, do you have a copy of those slides digitally that you might email to me later tomorrow or something? Yeah, that was great, man, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, I'm really grateful.
Thanks again. Alright, so, um, moving on to agenda item number four, review and discuss. Discuss of, um, discussion of sign regulations in the city. Staff deliver report.
So this is just a continuation of the discussion we had last month during the Planning Commission meeting, and it's really um, for you to give staff direction on where you want to go. So, um, we discussed a number of signs during that previous meeting. We discussed some regulations that you wanted to see, some questions that you had. Steph went and did a little bit of research, it's in the staff report about what other cities are doing, just so you have that in case you wanted to see what some other communities are doing. But really, this is for you tonight to tell us which direction you want to go in. In, within here, I only have a few opinions, it's mostly just seeking out, um, input from you. So one of our first, um, topics of discussion is A-frame or sandwich board signs, and you do have a definition within our zoning ordinance, but it does say that's on a sidewalk. So, that is one in which, depending on what we say here tonight, staff would recommend a change for clarity. Um, currently, they are allowed only on private property, and it has to be within fifteen feet of the main entrance, so you cannot in fact put it on a public sidewalk, it's prohibited from that location. Um, our code does not currently contain size limitations for an A-frame sign, so it could be any size it wants to be. Most cities do regulate the size of any frame sign. So in terms of, and what I'm going to do is just with each one, it's, it's just easier for me if we answer some questions to focus the discussion and keep it with each one, so as far as A-frame signs, I do have three, um, questions for you, one would be, do you want to allow A-frame signs anywhere else? Um, are you okay with, if we're going to stick with the current regulation, modifying that definition to remove the sidewalk? And then, do you want size regulations for A-frame signs? So if you could help me with those three questions, that would be helpful.
Uh, commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns?
We can do it.
The, the only one that I, so the, I just wrote my answers to the questions, number one, no, number two, no. And then on number three, I measured, um, an open house sign because we did say open house signs are okay, um, A-frame, the the visi, the visibility of it would be okay at twenty-six inches wide by thirty-two inches high. I noticed that on the picture it says forty-six inches, that's almost four feet high or tall. Does that make sense?
That's me, yes.
I, I can't hear you.
It does to me, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, concerns for any of the other commissioners?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I just had a, a comment, it's kind of our overarching, all of these categories of signage, and, uh, Erica, I thought you did a great job of kind of breaking them all into different categories. But it seems to me that the a lot of these provisions differ with respect to whether we're talking about the historic district, which was very coincidentally identified on these color maps that Liz handed us in blue. The historic district is on the National Registry, and therefore, what happens within the historic dis, district is different than what happens outside it, even though that both uses might be what we refer to otherwise as commercial. Uh, because within the historic district, I, I believe there are different considerations, higher considerations on that issue. So what might be appropriate then for Valero, um, may not be appropriate within historic districts and so forth. Um, so as regards A-frames in particular, um, if it's outside of the historic districts, I have less of a concern, if it's within, then I do agree that there might be some, an opportunity to limit the size and so forth. Because what are we concerned with, with historic district, we consider, we're, we're concerned with maintaining that historic aesthetic. That's not true, and, and commercial outside historic district. As to the issue of sidewalks or not, personally, I don't have a problem with an A-frame sign being on the sidewalk as long as it doesn't, um, prove to be an impediment to ingress or egress, or a danger to passersby and so forth, but just conceptually, I think it can be okay. But if, and if it was limited to private property only, then in a lot of instances, I don't see, I think that kind of just eclipses the need for, the business's need for an A-frame in the first place, because I think that's the point of having an A-frame might be to put it in a spot that can be noticed by pedestrians and maybe even motorists, so, um, I don't have a lot of heartburn over A-frames on the sidewalk.
Can I ask a follow-up, are you just referring to an A-frame on a sidewalk outside of the historic district?
Yeah.
Are you okay with it in the historic district?
Within the historic district, I think similarly, I think that it might be okay to have them on the sidewalk as long as they're removed every evening and, and only displayed maybe during business hours. Otherwise, there's no purpose for them, and they would further, there's no need for them, uh, outside of business hours. And the size, um, restrictions and limitations I think are more germane and more important within the historic district, so I would I'd be in favor of a smaller size, I don't know, Erica, if your attachment one has size.
So let's see, so
San Luis has eight square feet.
So, San Luis Obispo, their code is quite unique in that you can't have them in the downtown, but only if they're off the sidewalk within the doorway to a business. But they also have that smaller size, the eight square feet, so they get to pick the dimension, as long as it doesn't meet, as long as it is no more than eight square feet. If you want to allow it in the downtown, and we want to allow it in more places, the question would be, would you like to require a permit? Or maybe it expires after a year, where we're making sure they're putting it in the right location, so as to avoid undue code enforcement action?
And the vision for a permit like that would be, it would entitle the business owner to display an A-frame sign in the allowed and reviewed and approved location, but the display could occur during business hours. in the allowed and reviewed and approved location, but the display could occur during business hours every day that they're open.
Yeah, and we would say like, don't chain it to a tree, don't chain it to a light pole, don't, uh, just off the top of my head, don't put it in the middle of the sidewalk, make sure we have the, the ADA required path open, and my, if we did a permit, I would suggest that it's a low-cost, one, form, kind of deal, where they're just filling in the information and showing us like on a Google map where it goes, and then we could just review from there, so it'd be quick for them.
And then what do you think about, um, size limitations for an A-frame within the historic district? One of the things I, before you answer, one of the things I noticed is that I'm familiar with all these communities, I don't know, Cedar Creek, that's historic.
That's historic, yes.
That's a historic town, um, but I'd be interested to see if there's any analogous communities, like San Juan, as much as we do have this pretty special historic district. And what they do to regulate signage within it.
So I picked Cedar Creek because they are very historic, um, cute little downtown, similar to San Juan Bautista. They picked Pasadena because they tend to have very strict regulations, just to see what they have as far as signs goes. Um, they're strict in what you can do in that city, for some reason, they don't mention A-frame signs in their code, so technically, they would be not permitted, but I don't know how they enforce it, really. Um, Morgan Hill, I always use it as an example, cause they recently updated their entire zoning ordinance, so it's a good example of um, being current with the times. And then San Luis Obispo, cause they have a vibrant downtown, it's not necessarily historic completely, but it is a vibrant downtown, kinda similar to San Juan Bautista, a number of stores and restaurants. So that was the comparison purposes, um, again, Santa Cruz has, you know, a historic downtown area too, so. Um, in looking at kind of cities along, along that line, there are probably other cities we could use, but quite frankly, these are the ones that I kinda trust, you know, as zoning ordinances get really out of date, cities, some cities tend to stop enforcing the regulations, so you don't wanna see anything too out of date. But, again, in this city, we're unique in that we have our design guidelines, plus our zoning requirements. And I'm not proposing any changes to the design guidelines as part of this, it wouldn't be my recommendation.
Um, any other comments, questions, with our commissioners?
If I do have any comments or recommendations, rather do that after we hear from the public. If you are gonna do that today.
Yeah, we can.
Um, so I'll reserve my time after that.
Got it, thank you.
I think it would be helpful if we allow public comment for each one, just so in case if they don't care about A-frame, and they don't, you know, but wherever they would like to speak, just so we have it in each section, so we don't get confused with too many signs at the end.
Got it. Alright, um, well, uh, going back, just cause, you know, we're commenting it, um, commenting on it, um, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner DeReez with the A-frame signs of, uh, you know, depending on the location, that's where it matters. Um, however, I know that A-frame signs are a big deal for our local businesses, so I will also agree that I wanna hear from our businesses, to see what they're looking for and how that impacts their business. But also, I do wanna keep in mind of making sure everything looks tidy and it looks right, because the historic district should have a, some kind of aesthetic look, or something that looks pleasing when you come to visit town. Um, so I will also be interested to open up to public comment, just to hear those that are in chambers or on Zoom, just to see what they, they're looking um, for. As for size, same thing, um, you know, I know, you know, we don't wanna go crazy big, but, um, you know, I, I do get that they wanna display and advertise their business, so what does that look like, and what should that be? As for, again, being, going back to the sidewalk situation, I don't mind a sidewalk. Um, as long as people can walk through, but also, I don't mind, and this is just an example of an A-frame sign in front of one of those barrels, so a good example would be Lola's, right? She's got a tight little sidewalk right there on the corner, and she likes to advertise her sandwiches, uh, her business. I wouldn't mind that A-frame inside of, in front of those wine barrels, right? So technically, that's the street. But also, I wouldn't want an A-frame hogging up a parking space, so whatever that looks like, I don't know if we can figure that out, but anything that helps the businesses, I do see, um, uh, the owner of Bliss Blends in chambers, and I know, um, there's been concerns where they don't have enough, um, advertisement or signage, so how do, how are they able to display a sign out there and get people to come in, so, again, just being mind, uh, mindful of what the business owners in town, um, would like to see. Um, so with that being said, uh, if there's no other comments from our commissioners, I would like to open up to public comment.
Mr. Chair, can I, uh, your, your, your comments, um, maybe think of something? As far as the size, the, that you and I both brought up, what would you think about a uniform size for all A-frames within the historic district, so at least they all look kinda the same?
I, I think that would, that would be good, I like that idea.
I like that idea too, um, but I don't have a certain measure, so.
I'm sorry.
What's that, Liz?
Yeah, let's see, the slide that I, wait, where's my slide? See. So, this one is twenty-seven by forty-six.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll speak a little louder, sorry.
So, I mean, you can't buy them on Amazon, there are standard sizes on Amazon, we could just pick that if you wanted, um, if you wanted to pick a background color, we could, or you could give people more flexibility, it's up to you. The sign I took off the internet was twenty-seven by forty-six, and that seemed a lot, a lot of what was advertised.
Got it.
That's, that's a, that's a pretty common uniform size for A-frames.
Yeah.
It's just, it's hard to, I wish there was little kids standing there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would, I think I would wanna see. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna just go over a picture, I would think I will either order one myself, just to see what it looks like. Um, but again, I, I do like that idea, I, and I'm curious to know what our local business owners would prefer.
Okay, that's good.
Um, so any other comments from our commissioners?
Plastic's not good, it should be, yeah.
Yeah, um, alright, well, with that being said, you have something?
No.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, I did mention that the one that she had just said, the twenty-seven, five, forty-six, that's, that's pretty tall, that's big. So if you are looking at keeping the A-frames closer to the business entry, rather than the sidewalk, um, that's gonna take up a lot of space. Standard size that she was mentioning is the, uh, twenty-six by thirty-two, you still have the width and then just the height, and that's standard, um, not just for open house signs, but for other signs where there's still visibility for them, and it could be placed near the entry, not blocking any egress. Um, and then, uh, if it's on the sidewalk, still, you have room. Uh, again, that's just a standard size.
Got it, thank you, actually, that's helpful.
So holster is a minimum of three feet, a maximum of four feet in height, and then it's limited to three feet in width. Further down.
So, from your example here, though, so that would be, this is forty-six and three feet is thirty-six, so ten inches shorter?
Yeah.
And maybe a little bit wider, I was just mentioning, I think Jose, it'd be really cool when we get down to the, your proposed uh, language changes. Uh, and this might seem extreme, and I don't know how we would do it, maybe a funk core or something, just to see what a mock-up looks like at different sizes, or, or get it to measure or something. I mean, I can certainly do that at home too, but.
The other thing that you could do is, um, to have an actual vendor make all the signs, the the businesses can design what they want to put on their sign, but the size itself, the background, all of that can be done by a specific, if you wanna name a specific, uh, sign vendor. And they can make it light, they can make it, um, uh, portable, however you wanna make it, but then that way everybody has a place that they can go, and, and the vendor knows exactly how to make it for San Juan Bautista.
I like that idea.
I don't know that we can do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't give them, it doesn't give the businesses their, that, you know.
It's us, hmm, going not through a process and doing something.
Yeah.
I'm just not a hundred, I don't think we can do that.
Alright.
Now, now that I've heard some comments, I'd like to throw a monkey wrench into this whole thing.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to see that, uh, the signs, uh, it, uh, really comes out of the permit process, where the city and the business work in partnership to make sure that we're doing everything we can to serve the business in general, whether it's a historic area, whether it's not, but it should be designed and put into, as far as the size goes, we can, we can tailor it to where if, if there's any really uh, suggestions that might be outlandish or something like that, it can come before the, uh, planning commission. But I think it should be a business partnership between the city and, and the businesses, to determine where we're gonna put these A-frame signs based on, because every location is different here, and unique in San Juan, and there might be a better way to do that if we work together on it, rather than having standard size and what have you, and some of these standard sizes might just get in the way. Just thought, just my way of thinking, because we are, if you're gonna put this on the sidewalk, this is something you can walk up to. So it doesn't have to be very big, unless you have multiple, uh, images on there that you have to display. Then you might wanna think using a bigger one, but, um, if you're walking up to something like that, you're maybe four or five feet away from it, you should be able to see something, um, generally, standard size between twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch, is my suggestion. But I'd still ra- rather hear the public or businesses, what they have to say.
Got it, thank you, alright, well, um, with that being said, I will open up to public comment on this, um, item. Anyone in chambers that would like to make a public comment?
Hello, I'm Kim Callum, I live in Copperleaf, across the road. Um, haven't ever met you guys before, I know Dawn a little bit. I was the person that went through the community engagement process to get us a Parks and Rec program.
Right.
So, I work for Santa Clara County Parks and Recreation, it's what I do. Part of my job is historical and cultural collections, uh, for Santa Clara County Parks. It kinda fascinates me when I look at this, I love small communities, that's why I'm here. And when you look at our street, our main historic street, it's dilapidated, it's not really a preserved historical, cultural community, it's really some old buildings with history that people aren't keeping up. So I'm kinda fascinated that that's not the first thing that we're taking care of, because that's hurting business in town as well. So just for your consideration. The other thing I'd like you to consider is, we are a unique community, and we've seen people like Teresa who went out and hustled money for the, the track. We've seen, uh, the superintendent of schools bring the community together to see how much better we can do. We have a senior program, we have a developing Parks and Recreation program. We couldn't do it without each other, cause you guys don't have the resources. Dawn doesn't have the resources, and if you don't have those volunteers, and your businesses out there working together, then you're not doing the community a service. If Parks and Recreation, senior programs, food programs, if we don't have businesses willing to help support these programs, then that won't happen. And so, when I go and ask for, uh, can you support this program? Well, they're thinking, I'm being nickel and dime by the city already, these regulations are killing us. So I just ask you to take a step back, look at, we can have a different relationship than Morgan Hill, very different community. All, all these communities you mentioned are great for research, they're the same ones I probably would have researched too. But their downtown is not dilapidated, they've gone in and spruced up to make it look like a historic district. And we're worried about signs first. So, I'm also a silent owner of, uh, Bliss Blends, Christina runs the show, I work for the county. And so, she'll talk to you a little bit more about sign details and those kinda things, I just want, I like your comments about local business, I'm glad that you guys are tuned into the businesses, because it's been a struggle. You know, we went through the edcac process to try to, you know, spruce up the town and increase business and and pull everybody together, and that, uh, that kinda flopped, we hope something comes back in that way, but we have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in chambers? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Christina from Bliss Blends, I'm one of the merchants in town. A-frames, when I first started to open up my business, it was necessary, because the building that I've been in was closed for years, people walked by as if I was still closed, until I put an A-frame out. Then they stopped and looked and went, there's a business here? A-frames are essential for this town. One thing that you guys haven't really factored in, as far as looking at all the other cities, population. We are a very small populated town, and if you compare Santa Cruz Monday mornings to Santa, San Jose Monday mornings, you'll know the difference. How do I draw people in? Through signage, I have my flags that tells people what I have. I have my A-frame that sits on my private property. They stop, they look, they read, they come in, it's the only way I get people in. And I, this candy store, they also are very, it's important for them to have an A-frame, because they also draw people in, because they don't know they have Gitch Ditch pies. If, unless that A-frame is sitting out there, people think it's a candy store. We offer so much more in our stores than what we can promote on the outside. So A-frames give us that label ability of what's in there. As far as size goes, you can come into my store, I have two A-frames, they're wooden frames, and they're a perfect size, you can write as much as you want on it, you can put photos on it, and it's, I think, three feet, if not smaller, and, um, the width, I think, is three, you can buy them on Amazon, and people stop and read. So, which surprises me, because they don't read anymore, um, but it's, it's essential. A-frames are, as long as they're not obstructing any kind of walkway or, uh, parking, they're essential in this town, any kind of signage is essential in this town to draw people into the businesses. Otherwise, they just walk right by, this first thing, I put a flag out, and I had coffee on it, people started coming in. Oh, you have coffee, I thought you were just a smoothie place, no, look, see, there's a photo of it, right there, they come in. My profits have increased because of my signage, you take them away, my profits decrease, I go out of business. So, twenty-seven cents.
Thank you. Any other comments in chambers?
Seeing no other speaker cards?
Alright, any comments on Zoom?
Seeing no hands raised?
Right. Well, um, I'll, I'll throw that back to, um, well, to the commissioners for comments or questions, concerns, or anything.
Well, I went through all of it, and I, I've kinda went through, uh, step by step of, of the questions, what have you. And the, um, s- sign, uh, code and what have you, that we had. So I made up a report on that, and I submitted it to the city, if they wanna look over through that, and I'm sure that it'll be, if anybody in the audience would like a copy of it, be happy to send you a soft copy. Just, just, I just keep, the thing is, when I work on these things, I, every day I kinda update it, so if you get one tomorrow, it might be a, a better version, who knows, but anyway, um, if everybody's interested, um, you're, I'm more than happy to give you a copy.
I'm just being cognizant of Erica's questions and her preamble, which was to provide her with a guidance.
I think I have good direction.
Have we done that, have we done that?
I think so, I think we're willing to look into allowing an expansion of where sidewalk signs can go, you don't want them to be too big, especially in the downtown, uh, I think we wanna permit, if we did it in the downtown, to make sure they're not
Yes.
in the way of pedestrians and not tied up to city property, and
Generally, it's business.
Yeah, so, then that Yeah. So then that definition though can kind of, I might tweak the definition, but it can. The sidewalk thing isn't confusing then anymore if we're gonna. Uh we'll, we'll all figure that around, but I, I think I've got good direction.
And uh I think the other thing you may have heard is, I agree with the chair that a uniform size for A-frames, at least within the historic district.
Okay.
Might be something to pursue. Um size to be determined. We are testimony that three feet by three feet maybe, so it sounds like three might be right on the height. I don't know about the width, so however we determine that. I just wanted to respond to a comment that was made that we don't care about the upkeep of the historic buildings in historic districts, and I can assure you that. Nothing could be further from the truth. The, the, the reality is that those buildings are owned, I think, um in large part by um. Owners that don't, except for Dante who's here tonight. A lot of them live um out of the area. It's. Tough to, to enforce maintenance, paint, upkeep, those kinds of things, but we're, we do talk about that. All, all the time. Kara Wonk, who's not here tonight, uh always talks about tax incentives that are. Built into that and Make Whitman, our consultant, is all about um maintaining and restoring those buildings and so forth. So it is something that we are very cognizant of and, and prioritize. And just because we took up this issue of signage doesn't mean that we're prioritizing that over. The upkeep of the historic district in general. It's just a topic that came up, so Erica was kind of, and Dawn were kind enough to take it on. So those are my comments.
Uh any other uh comments, concerns from our commissioners? All right, seeing that, all right. Then um I guess we can continue to move forward in this presentation, correct?
This category.
Next category.
The next one is neon signs. Uh that was a concern during the last meeting. So the way the code reads is that neon signs, fluorescent or phosphorescent colors, flashing signs and LED signs are prohibited under our code. There is, and I'll talk about it and just, it, it. I'll talk about it in a different section, but there is a confusing thing under window signs that if we're gonna still. Not allow neon signs, I think we need to clean up, but um. This prohibition includes window signs, so you can't have like a neon open sign or a neon. I don't know, hot pizza inside or whatever you want. Yeah, that's, or yeah, or like a liquor sign. Those are prohibited under the code. Um I don't have any, I didn't have any questions for you, but unless for some reason you wanted to allow neon signs, you could tell me, otherwise we could continue status quo.
I mean, the only comment I would have is, I don't, I mean, all the other stuff, I get it, well, this isn't Vegas or whatever, so. You know, I do want to keep that historic integrity in down, in the downtown um historic district. The only exception that I would like to see is, um I do like it when some of the businesses have a sign that says open. It lets me know that they're open and I can go in there and get something. Um I, I've seen, I think, a business or two in town. I, I don't wanna. Let up, say it and then they're in trouble, but um I do utilize it. I do see it and when, then I know they're open and I walk in. Um but I, I, again, that's just my feeling. I don't know what the other commissioners or what the public thinks, but um. Yeah, I'm not all for just allowing all the neon signs, but an open sign, I think that's normal for business.
Not to interrupt, but you do allow internally illuminated window signs. So you still can have an open sign. It just, it just couldn't be like a neon sign.
I was just gonna say. I, I was just gonna say that in terms of the neon sign, it's addressed in the window signs. Um as illuminated and I had to get a clarification on illuminated versus lighted versus neon. So I, I know you're saying internally.
Yes. I have, I'm ahead here. So like this is an example of a window sign. It's actually illuminated. Um but you can't tell, right? You're not seeing the. You're not seeing the neon portion of it. It's not an LED like, where they're like. You know, the lights coming on and it's the lots and it's blinking or not blinking, but you can have a sign like that, so it could say open. There was a really good example, one that was really attractive that I found, and then I couldn't find it again, but there are some really good looking ones that are, that say open. That are internally illuminated, so there are possibilities out there, and the code currently allows them.
Okay.
Can't you just say lighted, LED?
No.
I, I'd like to add, uh as far as neon signs are concerned. They, they themselves have a historic significance. They go back many, many years as far as neon signs. We have two examples here in the city, one at the bakery and one at the Mission Cafe. That I wish would be restored with lights and what have you, but that's just my opinion. But the other thing, they do have an art value. Uh in fact, they are, they are used for art displays and what have you. And, 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 and well placed in museums and what have you. So i- if there is a. A neon sign out there that somebody owns and uh it has historical significance. And also art value to it, um that's something we should consider. And not really turn away from. Uh it might be important for the city. Uh city as unique as we are, we can find things to put on a window that will be also equally unique. And the other thing too, again, what we're doing here, we're trying to generate business for our, our business owners and what have you. And the uniqueness of San Juan Batista, there are many things we can do with that in order to generate better business. And like I said, partnership with City Hall and the permit process, it can go a long ways for, to that effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um again, I want to circle back to the distinction that I think needs to be made between the. Historic district and commercial in San Juan in general. In other words, um on the issue of neon, I think it's altogether different to have that discussion as regards historic buildings within the historic district versus. Valero, I'll say it again, or Windmill Market or Pizza Factory. I really don't care if any of those businesses have a neon open. Or closed sign. I guess it's just open when it lights up. As regards uh Commissioner Maderos' point about artistic and historical valued signs, yeah, absolutely, and. And but I think it is limited to the Mission Cafe and the Bakery. I think what we're really talking about is these neon, these neon signs you can buy at Costco. And say, open or closed, and I think they do look modern on. I don't, or beer, uh beer neon. It was interesting when these guys did the movie over here. Did you see how they put a whole bunch of neon beer signs in the windows of Windows Bar? Yeah, that was kind of a kick. Like they wouldn't have had those back then. Um so I think we have to have two different. Treatments or exceptions made for the historic district. I texted Evanda and Cara before I came here and I left my phone. I don't know if they texted back, but. I would love to hear from the Historical Society about what they think regarding neon within the historic district. I myself am against it, neon that is. Um or LEDs or any of those things, because I think it does detract from the historic ambiance. And I know we're not there yet in terms of our upkeep and it, it's, they're looking like Williamsburg, Virginia. It's a, a far cry from that, and I agree, a lot of work needs to be done to spruce it up. And make it beautiful and, and they're, they're for an attraction, you know, speaking of Williamsburg, look at the number of tours they get a year. So um there's a lot to be done, but I don't want to say, well, then it's, that some of these buildings look kind of ratty, so who cares? Let's put neon everywhere. I, I don't, I think, I don't think that's the right direction to go. I think we should maintain a goal. As to your point, which is a good one, you like to see whether something's open or not. I would remind you of a business you're very fond of, Vertigo. They've got a little open, closed sign that they hang on the window, don't they?
Don't they?
They do.
It works.
I can see it when I pull up. Oh, shoot, they're closed. Right?
True.
Pretty low tech, but it, it's, it's effective and um it works. And, and, and notice this, this too, that just when we're talking about internally illuminated, X, um neon, all that stuff. Like, you know, PG Carmel by the Sea, they require. They, a sign if they want, if you, that wants to be seen at night, then they have a light shining on it. And it looks pretty neat as opposed to.
A neon.
Yeah, Blossom Hill Road in San Jose, you know?
Yes.
So um but otherwise, I agree with you, Erica, that language is clear and enforceable. That's great. I query whether it needs to be a complete prohibition. In commercial areas within San Juan that are not within the historic district. I think the considerations are different. For the Windmill Center, uh for example, for Neil's Market, I don't care if they have a neon sign that says something. Or Valero or other, we don't have a lot of commercial districts, so those are the only examples I can only think of. Of commercial that's not within the historic district, but I think the considerations may be different there.
Okay, uh and then just to get back to the concern about a historic structure, if they have existing neon. There's a section in our code that allows them to keep and maintain their historic signs. Some cities do have, and the term varies, but it's like signs of unique characteristics. And it's to capture, like maybe, I don't know, a building gets designed and it's like cool and funky and looks like a nineteen sixties thing, but like those signs don't fall within the code. And so it allows the planning commission to kind of deviate based on architectural style. We could look into that if that's something you're interested in. But then I wouldn't necessarily recommend it in the downtown because that'll open up a whole situation.
I, I think those, the two that David mentioned, the bakery and the Mission Cafe, those are exceptions, not the rule. There's only two of them. Did Meals used to have a uh, a neon sign that says chicken on it or something? Barbecue? Is it still up or do they take it down? It's up.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, because it's up and if they refurbished it, it'd be pretty cool.
If they're, what, say again?
If they refurbished it, it would be pretty cool.
It would be pretty cool. That's not in the historic district anyway, but as to the bakery and the Mission Cafe, yeah, those. And to have those redone today would be tens of thousands of dollars. Those are really special, even refurbishment, I think that. They're, they're cool. I don't think that's what we're talking about though. We're talking about this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That stuff looks cheap and gaudy.
All right, any other comments or uh from our commissioners? We've already opened to public comment. Yeah, all right, with that being said, I'm going to open. Open up for public comment on this category of neon signs. Anyone in chambers? Yes, Mr. Larry Kane. Would we be able to get him the microphone? Yeah, we'll take the mic down.
Phil Donahue.
Yeah.
There we go.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh I've enjoyed uh the comments, but. I have an issue that I think is under this purview. I don't like to see the signs that say we don't have restrooms. I think that those are telling the public that comes here that we don't want them. I think that this is something that, that um. Shows that. The merchants in a town may be unfriendly, which is not true. I think that. We need to. Get behind the idea to have public restrooms, which are. Accommodating people without having them to go halfway a town, across town. To take care of their needs, to take care of their babies. Like, I come out on the street sometimes after an event. And I find um. Unmatureables, which are. Sort of out of plastic, to give you an idea. And uh they're usually looking very wet. Okay, I think that's not good for our city either. Uh so I, I've been doubting the project for some time to. Have public restrooms um in the downtown area, not out. In the reaches of the school or other places. I think that it's an insult for people who have a business. To have that kind of sign. I understand that there's a cost to have in the restroom for people. There's a problem to. Maintain it uh during business hours. It's, it's, it's not fun for a business owner to have that uh forced on them, but. We need to support the idea to have convenient. Services available to people downtown. And to that end, we have. A. Project going that, that, you know, the two lots that are right down here below the City Hall. Okay? Yeah, those two projects are now available to do the project, or excuse me, the lots. Uh to do the project that, that we're advocating. That, that is going to a different idea, but um your subject, but. It does involve signs. So that, that's, that's. What I'm parking under. But I, I think that. I see, I understand when we're, we have a, a race or something going on. Uh it's, it's hard, very hard. It's hard for the business owners to use it. Uh to, to let, let people use their facilities. It's hard for the people living in town uh to come downtown to see the events. And, and uh I think that. Our reliance on the. Few public things that are available um is falling short of. Our ability to have great fun events in San Juan. So um I'm asking. For the city council, not which involves the planning machine uh to. Make that a priority. That we make it a friendly city to people who come here to spend their money and enjoy. The things that we enjoy. So. I'm a little bit. Far away from your subject, with the subject, these little signs that say, no public restrooms.
Got it.
Okay?
All right.
They're not good for business.
Thank you. Any other comments from um chambers?
Christina from Bliss Blends.
Welcome.
Hi, uh just a, just a brief comment. There are the neon signs that are during the day that are visible. Uh G and G's has one, and I know that it's. Whenever I drive my bike back, it's really visible and it says we're open. There are so many people that come on Tuesday that try to open up the door thinking that they're open, so it's. If you guys don't care, we don't care. It's like, it's, it's another. Sign that creates business within the community and. Being historical or not, I mean, they had it and, and this movie, right? And um and what other people were saying that it is, goes back a very long duration of time as far as when they're. What's considered historical. So um yeah, I, I feel that they're necessary. Any signage that is within a, you guys already have the ordinance as far as how big they can be, right? Keep it like that. I think that's my opinion.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments in chambers?
No other speaker cards received, but we do have one.
No other speaker cards received, but we do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Welcome, Ms. Monk.
Hi, this is Kara Vonk. Hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Sorry, I, I joined late, um, I, there are a couple of comments that I want to make. Uh, first regarding meals, uh, I thought it was protected under our ordinance. And I do consider it a historic sign, and I think it was generally regarded as a historic sign that needed to be protected. And under our former community director, who's no longer with us, I believe he was working with the owner, Niels. Um, to, uh, come up, you know, with some solutions for restoring that sign. It's a really cool sign. And maybe we need to look at the ordinance again, because I did think it was protected. Um, then I agree with Mister Kane about the no, no restroom sign. And I seem to remember that years ago, there was some discussion about building public restrooms. I think it, that's Mariposa Street, just to the right of the old fire station. There's, you know, kind of an alley. Behind those buildings that are face, uh, Third Street. And I think there was even a water fountain or something at one point when we had to go get, uh, potable water. It was being made available in that area. Hopefully you know which area I mean to you, what, 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 what I mean. So there was some discussion about building restrooms there for the community, and maybe that's something that can be pursued. And then, um, regarding LED lights. I'm just wondering about the Christmas tree lights that line windows. Aren't those LEDs for the most part? I really think that they do not belong in our historic district, the ones. That line the, the picture windows of the stores there. Uh, I personally, I think it looks tacky and it kind of reminds me of a red light district. We should have something a little more, um, I don't know what the word is, I'm sorry, I have a lot of senior moments these days. So, uh, yeah, maybe you can discuss those LED Christmas type lights. Um, I think that's pretty much it. Niels, um, I hope the city will go out of its way to protect. That sign and work with the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, any other comments on Zoom? All right, well, um, with that being said, I'm gonna pass it back to our commissioners for discussion, comments, um, commissioners, any?
No further comment.
I had a follow-up, uh, Larry, thank you for being here tonight, by the way. It's good to see you cruising out. I know, it has been too long. Would you, what would you think about instead of saying no public restrooms, turning that into a positive and saying public restrooms are available at where they are available? In your opinion, they're too far away, but maybe it'd be informative as to where, um, people might go. Uh, across, we're next to JJ's and then at Abbey Park. And I get a little one over there at the, by the question, the mission is public restroom tube, isn't it, still? No, that, that little, that little jail or whatever it used to be?
Yeah, that's.
So what would you think about that? Public restroom is available for public restrooms. An address or something, or how to get there, so it's at least a little bit positive. Would you like that better?
At least you could, uh, make some signs that tell people where they are.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um. Have you been in them?
David, David just volunteered to make those signs.
I just made a note of it, thank you.
Okay, that was just an idea, but nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Oh, uh, would you be able to come to the mic, sorry?
I do have a sign in my restaurant, um, that has the location of the public restrooms. They still come in with their legs crossed, saying, can I please use your restrooms? I'm not ADA approved, plus they have to come behind my counter, which is not health code. So I tell them all the time, they get angry with me, they walk out, and then I have just lost a customer. I, I tell them, here are the restrooms. Some of them are very appreciative, but then they say. Really, like I have to walk all the way down there, and I'm like, I'm sorry. And sometimes I ask Mrs. B if they can use hers, but, um, if it's a really desperate need. So, yeah, I agree with Larry.
Okay, um, I think the only comment that I would have is, again, I, you know, I, I don't mind an open sign. I, you know, whatever, whatever works for the businesses to keep them, um, afloat, because I know they're struggling. Um, I think for me, I think, I think you mentioned it. Uh, or someone mentioned it where maybe it's a certain size, a certain something, they all look the same. I don't know, um, so that it isn't just, just crazy madness, but again, um, that's just my opinion.
There, there's a way to solve this and we'll find it, find out what that is and, um, I think direction signs. Uh, foremost in parking lots and what have you might be a place to start with. Um, direction signs, thank you.
All right, that's all. Any other comments from the commissioners? And then, um. Do, do you have everything you need from us for direction?
Uh, yes, my summary would be. No neon open signs or other signs in the downtown, but they could still have an internal illuminated sign if they wanted. And, and.
Internally.
Internally illuminated sign, but, um, you are. Open to maybe allowing neon open signs outside of the downtown. Does that sound about right?
And that's what we're going for then.
You'd probably still wanna prohibit the LED ones, because those tend to be flashing. And more messages than a, than an open sign.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at that. I don't mind, yeah.
Okay, moving on. Okay, temporary banner signs. We allow two different kinds of temporary banner signs. One is for a grand opening or closing. You get thirty days in a one-year period. It's literally if you are. Opening or closing your building, but then we say other special event signs. Then there's a special event sign, um, with a size. You get two allowed per year. You have to have three months in between. You get it for thirty days. So I can put up for thirty days to take it down for at least three months before I can have another one. I don't know what special events means. And we have two different kinds of special events. That is a concern for staff, because if someone comes in and says, I have a special event. I don't know which way to direct them. There are no location restrictions, so someone could put a banner up on a tree, attached to a freestanding sign. Attached to a post, stick two posts in a ground and put up a freestanding sign. Most cities do only allow them attached to a building. Uh, so that is one in which. There should be a definition for special events and there should be a limitation on where you can put those signs. Those, those are staff recommendations in this case, um, just so you don't have. Junky looking signs, um, I do have questions, um, and it's more to. Do you wanna modify these signs? And what should a special event be? So I'll leave it on this one just while we answer our questions, so. I have two different sign sizes. I have a grand opening, closing, you get twenty square feet, then I have a special event and get ten square feet. Are you okay with those sign sizes?
So. What, say, say that again?
So you do.
Just that square feet?
Yeah, so great opening, closing, you get twenty square feet, so, uh, whatever you, you wanna do.
Okay.
To make that twenty square feet. Special event, you get ten square feet. But I don't know what those two mean, because we have other special events and special events, so that's a concern.
Ten square feet, four by fours would be sixteen square feet.
That's very small.
Yeah.
It's very small.
Two by three would be six. I don't, I don't even know what ten square feet looks like as a practical matter, or twenty.
Twenty is small too.
Yeah, five by seven would be thirty-five.
They're very small.
Is that, do you have other example, examples from other communities? On your matrix?
Most of my experiences with cities, the, these signs are quite larger. Um, that what, what you would allow, let's see what in. Paso, which is an older downtown, it's historic. It's one square foot per linear foot of building or tenant, tenant frontage. Now, in the downtown, that's probably not as significant, I don't know. But if you have a hundred feet of lineage, you get a hundred square foot sign. Cedar Creek is twenty-four square feet an area, and they give you more days. I have Watsonville thirty square feet, Morgan Hill thirty-two square feet, they're all bigger than them, yeah. We could combine it until we just have one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why is there two?
So let's, let's, let's combine them. I agree.
And I, and I wouldn't be opposed to having it bigger for the business. I mean, if I was opening something, I would want. People to know, hey, I have a business here. I mean, it's only for thirty days.
Yeah, you wanna shout, you don't wanna whisper.
Um, and the same thing if they're closing, um, special events. I think I get it, like, you know, we have all those events in downtown, maybe we're advertising the, some type of festival or something, or I don't know.
Shouldn't be it, it should be like, um. I don't know, I'm having a sale, or.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Actually, I.
Or I'm doing wine tasting this Thursday only as a shop and wine ta, I don't know, something like that.
But why would there be a need to have a different sized sign for that?
I don't know. I don't know why these two sizes now, for grand opening and closing, you do wanna kind of like narrowly limit those to like a specific. Because you don't want someone to be able to put a grand opening sign out for like a year, right?
No, no, no.
There are people that will push it.
Not with regard to duration, just the size, just the size issue.
I don't know why there are two different sizes, and I don't know why we have other special events and special events. I don't know what that means. There's no definition, there's no, no clue in the code.
Okay.
So.
I'm not opposed to keeping it both the same, and then special events to me, I mean, now that you bring up a point of. Maybe it's, hey, we're having a sale on this day. I mean, I know that when I, when we have those festivals in town. I hear from our local businesses that, you know, um, they don't really get traffic, just because all the tents are in front and blah, blah, blah. So maybe it allows them to put a sign that says, hey, we're here, we're open, come visit us while the, that festival's happening. Well, I wouldn't be opposed to something like that.
But if you're going to, if you're going to limit or dictate what the special events are going to be. Then doesn't that not allow the businesses or the merchants to select? And because you are actually limiting special event signs only two per year. Um, that's up to them, whatever their special event is, but they're only allowed two. That's what it says here. Allowed within a twelve-month period. So what does it matter if it's their business and they wanna have a special event sale?
Yeah, that's kind of a good point.
The reason to limit, and I'm, um, the reason to limit how many signs you'd have per year is because people will leave signs up all year long.
It's not about the limit, it's about what a special event is. You're trying to identify what that is, but you can't really identify that. For a vendor or a merchant.
So I would say, yeah, I would say, I don't understand why it says special event signs, because again, there's no definition. So I'm hard pressed to even say when someone could have this sign, if someone came to me. We can define it, and I think we're okay with someone wants to have a spit, ugh. A sale or a special event in their store, or I don't care if they must say Happy Valentine's Day. And we have sell flowers, whatever it may be, they get this flexibility, right? Certain, certain number of times per year. I think what we're also talking about is if there is an event downtown, how do we allow business owners to better advertise that they're open? And that could be an exempt sign during downtown events, where you can put up a banner if you wanted to. Or a window sign of a certain size, or whatever you felt like you wanted to allow. In those instances, that could be a different kind of sign. But this is really talking about allowing people certain times per year, limited. To advertise whatever it is they really wanna do, right?
So, so therefore we're concerned with the size and the duration. And the frequency.
So why don't we separate them out? So, right, so let's do grand opening and closing. Right now, we allow thirty days in a one, one-year period. Now, if you opened and closed in the same year, I would say you can have a sign again. Um, do you wanna continue doing the thirty days? That is standard in most cities.
I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to thirty days.
Why don't, why don't we do size first? Yeah, can we combine both signs to, let's do Cedar Creek's twenty-four square feet, that's a number, what do you think?
Yes.
Both types of signs, okay. So twenty-four square feet for any type of temporary sign, and then the student acts frequency twice a year, Erica?
So I would say let's separate them, because we have to be specific with grand opening and closing, because that's gonna be usually like the name of the business, right? And, I don't know, coming soon or now, now open, whatever you wanna say. So I would say for those, the thirty days is appropriate, because we want people to have permanent signs. And we don't want them to keep doing it. But for the special event signs, you know, we only allow two per year. We don't wanna get too crazy, because then, like I said, you'll just see banners all the time. Do you wanna continue to allow two per year, or what would you like to do?
My comment is yes.
Uh, my comment would be three.
Three?
I think three is reasonable too, like.
Okay.
I think, I mean, give an extra one for.
Okay.
Good, for good sake, I don't know.
It's still, it still seems easiest just, just to combine everything. Grand openings, special events, closings, whatever, one temporary sign thing, twenty-four square feet, three times per year. Presumably that's not gonna apply to a grand opening or closing, no one's gonna open or close three times in a year. And then the duration for all temporary signs, thirty days, did you say?
So if we combine them together, the only thing is, and I guess the three per year would alleviate that situation, but then you're still, you're limiting them. So let's say I open my brand new restaurant and I'm putting out my sign, because my sign hasn't come in yet. Or I wanna advertise to everyone that I'm coming soon, and then I'll get two more in that year.
I see.
If I'm having, I don't know.
Unless you were to say grand opening and closing is always an exception, that doesn't count.
That is why I'm suggesting we, we keep grain opening and closing separately, so that's like an extra gimme for new businesses or closing businesses.
Yeah, I think we keep them separate, and I kinda like the way it's written, because. We can always get with city hall, and when it comes through, through the permit process, we can make exceptions based on. What the rules are, based on what the needs are, so. I mean, um, or we can change this next year, I don't know. But I, I think it, I'm, I'm okay, I'm comfortable what I see here.
And then as regards your question, Erica, about what is a special event, I think I, I think it was the chair I said. Or maybe I just said, um. If it's limited to three, who cares what they think is a special event? Could be my birthday, I wanna have everything, everything's half off.
Okay, yeah, we can do that then.
That's what I would do too. Free snow cone for the kids. Like Tammy Castaneda, I know she celebrates Donnie's. Yeah, she celebrates, she celebrates Donnie's anniversary every year and offers, you know. Every, anything on the menu for however many years she's been there. So, kind of a taco for twenty-eight cents or whatever it is. So that's just, you know, something that's very unique to her business. It for sure would be a special event, and other businesses may have their own definition of a special event. I don't think they really care, as long as it's limited to three times per year.
Agreed.
Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Because there was a period of time when there was a brunch sign on top of Donnie's stairs every Sunday.
Ah. Just Sundays?
Just Sundays.
How they get up there all the time? Oh, from the, like, the, the on air? What's?
That's why you have a limited two or three, whatever you decide, right?
That's, no, but that's a, that's a real world good.
Yeah.
Hypothetical, the city manager points out, what do you do with a brunch sign?
Well, so they couldn't do it, they need a permit, they get three permits a year. A total of thirty days per permit, now if they want, I don't know, ten days they can do it, they're not required to put up thirty, and then. You have to, you still wanna do three months in between.
I, I, I say not in between, whenever they want, they wanna, well, consecutively, sorry.
We could say one month in between, I don't know.
Yeah, cuz I, you know, if they wanted to have some kind of event that was gonna last, you know, I think it's up to them, but I get it. I can see why someone would be concerned that this sign would be posted forever and then we'd get complaints. Um, I don't know, I'm curious, I would like to open that up to public comment, see what the business owners should have to say about that, and how.
Watch every Sunday.
But that's just me, so are, are the commissioners done? Or I don't mind opening up the dialogue, I mean.
It's more of a city decision.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, having them separate, um grand opening and closing. To because like you said, you have to use one that's for opening or one that's for closing and if you don't know if you're closing, maybe you don't have a permit. And you know, available at that moment. Um as far as size goes, look, if you look at the history books. Signs were written the full face of the buildings and full length of the buildings. So um it would be nice to have it so that it is readable if you're gonna put the effort and the work and the money. Into having an event in your in your company. Um the other thing is is that. Here's another way of looking at it, instead of having it three times per year, why don't you give them like days, like thirty days? So if you have a an event that's only gonna last two days, well, that's your two days that is up, right? And then you have twenty-eight more days that you can have a banner up. So that's another way of looking at it, instead of three times per year. So if you have, and then it can renew every year. Cuz if I'm not holding events in my place, but Vertigo is holding events like once a month. And they're only doing it on the weekends, go for it, yeah, bring people in, yay, I would love that. Because now they're limited to only three times a year, but give them days instead of years. Or times for per year and then have it renewed. That's my opinion.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, just to add to that, you know, when when you have a special event, whether it be separate or. Or 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 the same or what have you, it's it's gonna generate more business for yourself, whether it's closing or not or opening. But at the same time, uh it's eye catchy and it does good for the other businesses as well, like you said, you know, just. It brings people in for one event, but uh it will help the other businesses, so uh. I think we should have limits, I think there should be out there, but I think again, through the permit process. Since we wanna partnership the city with with businesses to make sure that we economically feasible and successful. We need to make exceptions when when it calls for it and um. It might be something we need to do more often after that, so we don't know until we come there. And sometimes to leave the door open a little bit and through the permit process, uh we can get there either a lot faster. And be more successful at the same time and benefit the whole of the city as far as business goes.
If I can be honest, this thirty day period is really long for a temporary banner, most.
Would you say thirty days?
Thirty days, it's a long time, most cities are like at ten fourteen. They do limit, I mean, two is not very many, but if you're at thirty days, it's a lot, the whole temporary banners are in of. By nature, supposed to be temporary, so what you try to avoid in crafting regulation and it's hard to capture everything. But what you don't want is a brunch sign appears every Sunday, that's a permanent sign at that point, that sign is coming every Sunday. Or every Saturday and Sunday for eternity, that's a permanent sign, temporary banners are by nature temporary, because. The visual quality of any building will be altered by a temporary banner, it just is. Let's say they don't take care of them, let's say they become frayed, let's say they're dirty, they are affixed to the building in a manner in which we cannot control. There are some controls we can have, like don't stick it on a light pole, don't stick it, you know, in a grass area, but it's gonna go up on a building. Attached by a rope or whatever it is, so they are by definition. You know, we do need to to restrict them, we don't want them, if you up on the floodgates, they will be everywhere and they will be constant and then it becomes visual clutter, right? But thirty days is a long period, if I'm having a Valentine's Day sale, I probably only wanna advertise for ten, maybe fourteen days before it. I don't need thirty days and then maybe we lower that thirty days and do a few more banners per year if you wanted to. It's entirely up to you, we just, what we don't wanna do is have banners, 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 banners. Like up for one day, down for one day, up for one day, down for one day to kind of circumvent the rules.
Mister Chair, I tend to agree with that, I think thirty days, that's a month, that's a long time for a temporary sign and then. The question becomes, when does it stop being temporary if it's up for a month? I personally, I'm fine with the fourteen days, the the outer number on that. And to the city manager's real world example of a s- sign that comes up every Sunday and is taken down. Well, I'm assuming, Don, don't you think that some of these things, so and let's just not focus on my business, let's talk about a business need. To have a reoccurring, albeit temporary, need for a sign of some kind. Taco Tuesdays, right, or something like that. That seems like something that could go on an A-frame pretty nicely. Lunch on Sundays.
An A-frame on the roof.
Right? With blinking lights.
I'm sorry, I had the same thought. And that's very, it serves just as well on the corner as you come into town in Franklin Street.
And I I know she's trying to track with that particular business, she's trying to track the mission. Uh congregants as they exit mass and they'll walk right past that A-frame or see it when they're going into park or something, so. Okay, so I think we handled the.
I mean, we have three types of signs, well, we will, let's say, you have, we we're gonna allow for an expansion of the A-frames, so there's an another sign opportunity for people. Um we'll have a temporary banner that kind of opens up the size, so there's another um nice one. And people can have window signs, you can have a sign in your window. We're gonna talk about that in a minute, but you can't have a sign in your window, so that's another signage opportunity. There are many signage opportunities that we're kind of expanding tonight, again. Banners are by nature temporary and they're used to only advertise in in intentionally, a city. Uses them to advertise on a on a temporary minor basis, so we don't get too many signs.
Got it. Um okay, well, um. With that being said, any other comments from our commissioners, so I can officially open up public comment? I think I did, but I didn't, I don't think I asked on Zoom or anything. Yeah, so might as well just kind of go back and read, is it be fair? Um again, I'll start chambers, it looks like we have something already here.
Okay, Christina from Blisslands, the thirty days for San Juan for. Closing and opening, I think is essential, because I still have people. Two years, two and a half years I've been open are still coming in, when did you open? And they live here. So I think it's essential for the closing and opening and closing for the thirty days, for the other s- events. Probably not, and that's why I suggested doing each, like we can get thirty days versus like three times a year. For the whole year, thirty days for the whole year, so that way we can, if we have a two day event, we're not using the one thing. You know, one event for one time. For it being a two day event, so. I I agree with the um thirty days for the closing and opening.
Got it, thank you. Any other comments from chambers? Any other comments from Zoom? Thank you, so um I'll throw it back to the commissioners for this one, um. Uh any other comments from our commissioners?
No, thank you.
Um I don't know, for me, I think I kinda agree with with our um with Christina from Blisslands, maybe we do thirty days, but. Maybe.
Opening or closing, she said.
Or closing, yeah.
Yeah, I. That's in my mind is separate.
Yeah, thirty days.
Thirty days.
We're got a different timeline.
Fourteen for my birthday.
But for the temporary banners, if we just limited them to thirty per year, that's actually less than they get now. So if we did, we could do ten days and we could give them a couple a year, it's it's up to you how you wanna factor it in. Right now, they get thirty days, they get twice a year, it's total sixty.
Okay. Yeah, if you were to give them, if you were to do the thirty days like she said, total and then use them whenever you want. Then maybe I would probably put, uh you had something where there was like a clause there where you can't do them back to back.
So if we just took it as days, first of all, that's hard for staff to track and second of all, they're applying for a permit every time they wanna stick up that. So my recommendation would be cap the number of days.
To what?
Can have and they don't have to put it up for ten, fourteen, whatever you pick, but then let's pick a number of days per year. Or a number of permits per year and let's pick if you want a distance and a separation in between, the one we have right now is pretty big.
Okay, well, I'm confused, so we have two?
So grand opening and closing, we're saying thirty days, you get one per year or, well.
Yeah.
If you're grand opening.
Well, yeah, and you're closing, so two, well.
And we will define that, so it is very clear, we have a definition in the code for what it means, not. I feel like I wanna read grand reopening for fun, so I can give us.
Okay, so temporary signs, we have grand opening, closing and special events.
Yeah.
Those are the two flavors of this ice cream. Uh thirty days for grand opening and closing seems to be the consensus, true? Okay, special events, how many days, let's do that first. Well.
Fourteen.
As to both, are we doing twenty-four square feet for both? Like Center Creek?
I think that's what the consensus is.
Okay, twenty-four square feet for both and then thirty days for grand opening, closing, special events, how many days, ten? And then we can talk about.
Give them, give them a straight two weeks.
Yeah, fourteen days, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Okay, and then what do you, what are your thoughts, I had about how far apart they should be, so they don't do fourteen back to back for twenty-eight?
I thought that uh Jose had said something about not allowing them to do back to back, not consecutive.
Right, so therefore what? How what how much space, Erica asked how much space should be in between those fourteen days?
Typically in other cities, what do you see?
Everyone is so different, I've seen you can combine two together if you want. I have seen a month apart, I have seen ninety days apart. Everyone's all over the place.
Why don't we do this, we're we're talking three special events per, three special event signs per year, right?
I was gonna say that should dictate, that should dictate to them what it would be because they get to choose three times out of the year.
And it's only fourteen days, so if you were to do it.
Right? And so if they they end up doing it back to back, that's on them, they've used up two.
Yeah, I agree, I I like that idea, but um what Dan has a thought here?
We update to force a special event, temporary banners per year, then we could say one, only one per quarter. That'd be really easy to track. Quarterly. What do you think about that, Erica?
We could do that, because they get what, sixty days now?
Yeah.
Which only get two per year, but you technically get sixty days, so at least with, if we do four, we'll kind of keep them closer to allow what they allow today, but more flexibility.
And then then there, then as to the concern that someone might do temporary sign fourteen days at the end of quarter one and then another fourteen to begin of quarter two, well. For a total of twenty-eight, is there any concern there?
No, because originally we had a code that allowed it for thirty days.
Okay, well, there you go.
Okay, so.
One per quarter.
So I'm gonna go to calendar year with the permit requirement because it's very confusing the way it is now and someone has to really keep track. So it'll be per calendar year, every whatever. Whatever months that you get one sign. To be determined how you stick it in there, if you end one quarter and begin a quarter, that's just the way it goes, is that what we're thinking? Twenty-four square foot sign for both. Grand opening and closing are still separate at thirty days, completely different. A lot of definitions for both, so it'll be much more clear.
So we'll do four times, they can do um.
It sounds like four times per year.
You could do your birthday too.
Now clarification on the calendar year, um this, that that includes counting weekends and holidays.
Yes, so so January first. The clock starts again and you can start again with your permits, so from January first to December thirty-first, you have your four quarters. And that's in which you can do it, if you miss a quarter, you just don't get a sign. Whatever, but you get up to four per year, one per quarter. We reset the clock again, starting the first year, but you will have to get a permit every time you wanna put up a sign.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what if I wanna bank them or roll them?
No carryover, that's why we'll do our calendar year.
Yeah, I didn't wanna bank them, yeah, wanna bank them. Okay, um what else, any other direction from?
I don't think I need, I think that was, that was pretty good, I think we got it.
All right, next category. Holy cow, I didn't realize there's.
We're gonna be sick of signs by the end of this. Okay, window signs. So. Originally, you know, when we discussed neon prior. And now I think we're kind of relaxing the neon, but we do allow illuminated window signs, so there is, it is allowed now. So you could do it any fashion you want. But we have no limitation on how much of a window you could cover, so someone could literally cover their entire window with a sign. Most cities cap it at twenty-five percent, I've seen up to thirty percent, so in terms of window signs. Um again, I have some questions, but.
Yes.
Do you wanna cap how much of a window someone can occupy by a sign, plus, I mean, there's two things, one, it's a temporary sign. And two, if you cover an entire window, nobody could see inside. So that is not conducive to like pedestrian, but friendly environment.
Well.
You're considering a window sign as a temporary?
That that was my question.
Yeah.
They can be temporary or permanent, sorry, so you can have a permanent sign if you want, I don't like that, like my little picture here. Oops, not that one, so you could have, let's say. My sign is internally illuminated, it says I sell coffee or I sell smoothies and ice cream or I sell pizza in this fashion. Is allowed under the code right now, um but you could occupy the entire window, I have nothing to say. And window signs can also be temporary by nature, I can put up for like sale going on fifty percent off and I can. Yeah, I can occupy the entire window, some cities do entire like total area of all window panes together, some go by pane to pane to pane. Pane to pane to pane ends up being like smaller in nature because you're really limiting them or you take the totality of the whole window area together. But my, we don't restrict it.
But my vote yes or no on something like that would be hugely dependent on whether it's a permanent request or temporarily, they wanna block too much of the window. Temporarily, okay, maybe, permanently, it's gonna look like that, no. You see what I'm saying, I think I'd be more stringent with if 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 the proposal was permanent.
I do, window signs by nature tend to be more temporary, um because they're usually to advertise the sale or something, they will in some cases be permanent.
Catherine Nero, Catherine Nero, kind of like they got some permanent ideas there with that one.
Permanent, yeah, so. I mean, you could have a difference, but again, we're looking at how much of that window do you wanna block?
I like the proposal of the twenty-five percent.
And window signs are exempt, so.
Can you say something that is that is permanent? Now, uh whatever is permanent there, it uh brings down the window size. And then uh whatever is temporary, we have a percentage in which can be covered as far as the limit goes. Is that something we can think doing or?
So we wanted to get the, we.
If you had, if you have a temporary sign and it only covers ten percent. So the rest of it can be covered up to forty percent, let's say, but those are temporary.
Yeah, so what we would make, I'm trying, cuz there's also code enforcement comes into play, right, we gotta make it easier on everyone. So you could just say you get no more than thirty percent of your window covered, I don't care what you cover it with. Cover it with permit sign, you cover it with temporary signs, total thirty percent and it's and it just lives that way. You could say uh permanent sign can only occupy X amount of percentage and temporary can only occupy X amount of percentage, we start getting, that starts to get a little hard. Um but window signs are exempt, so there's no permit requirement, and so it becomes a code enforcement matter. And to say like, you can have temporary signs, you can block the whole window, but you only get certain times per year, we start running into an issue. In terms of how you regulate that and and keep it under control.
And I know I sound like a broken record, but it, once again, um. My evaluation is much different for the historic district than it is for a commercial. Enterprises, businesses are outside of the stars district, like Windmill, for example, I'm pretty sure they have like a whole window covered with an IGF, whatever. Welcome to Windmill and it looks fine to me, I don't care about that thing, but it's Windmill Mart's a grocery store. Whereas a historic building, like the tax building or the old cutting horse building, you start covering up that whole window. It it's really gonna detract from the aesthetic, I think, of the building and the and the, there's historic third street.
Again, the permit process. I said again, the the permit process.
I mean, we could require. A permit for permanent window signs and cap. The space in which they occupy and then we can regulate them. And then allow for whatever for temporary signs, we can allow different from downtown to everywhere else, it's it's up to you, most cities cap. And then allow for whatever, for temporary signs, we can allow different from downtown to everywhere else, it's, it's up to you, most cities cap. Window signs at twenty-five percent, it's just a cap.
I like that twenty-five percent, but are you seeing that twenty-five, are you suggesting twenty-five percent for temporary and permanent both?
Most cities, it's twenty-five percent for permanent and temporary to, and totality, it's, the purpose is, in most cities, what you have is people blocking the window. With signs, with whatever it is.
Most people did what, what'd you say?
Blocking the full windows.
Blocking the, oh, and then they're trying to curtail that.
Yeah, because again. If I'm strolling down my pedestrian-friendly downtown and I can't see in any windows. It ruins that ambiance for why you would wanna walk and stroll down to downtown, if I can't see in any building.
Yeah, let's say, yeah.
You ruin it.
The dark district, for sure, and the star district.
Yeah, dark tinting too goes into play, um. But really, because again, window signs are usually. Exempt. Um cities just don't want. Say oh fifty percent nonstop covering all the windows. Or, you know, come, come inside and see, I don't know, whatever it is. And you're completely occupying the full window, which is, you know, unfortunately, people will push the boundary, and if they can, they can.
So Erica's suggestion is twenty-five percent maximum temporary or permanent.
Okay. And, and you, you, and this, you don't need a permit or anything, right?
You would still not need a permit, I mean, if you keep it at twenty-five percent, they shouldn't need a permit.
I'm, I'm opposed to all this permitting, cause it makes it harder for these businesses just to run their business, so um.
I was just gonna ask about that, uh about the permits, eh, yeah, every time we say permit, are we talking? Permit with a fee or permit just to be in compliance with uh the regulations?
Well, if we're gonna require a permit, we need to require fees, we need to capture some.
Okay, so then, then that becomes a question for uh vendors, do, do you wanna keep charging them? That money. Instead of. You know, once all these regulations regarding signs. And you post it and you, you provide them a copy so that they can abide, it's kinda like when you have a. Credit card and they said regulations have changed, here, here's a notice, and then they have to comply.
My personal recommendation would be, do not require permission window signs.
Yeah.
I think it's too much work and it's not fair to businesses, if we limit it to twenty-five percent, that's fair. Just so you know, and what I personally like to do is. With um. We're ways away, but with uh, we're gonna create a new ordinance, is we'll have a handout, dear business, these are the signs you can have. As temporary nature, you get twenty-five percent of window, you get a banner, X, Y, Z days of the year. In plain English, a zoning ordinance is not in plain English, is very hard for some people to understand, unfortunately, that's the way they are written. Right, just like the government code, that's written in, in a way that is confusing, and we need to make it easier on people. And so that should be the goal, we have a regulation, but we'll make it easier on them, so they can easily understand, you know what they can do, they're like, I'm not getting any business, I'd like to have some extra signs. We have a, a handout for them, that they can use. We are a little ways.
Okay, yeah. Kinda, Mr. Chair, uh. I would agree with you in general, but again, with the, the exception of the historic district.
Yeah.
Especially a temper, I mean a permanent window sign in the historic district like Cafe Nero. I bet Cafe Nero had to get some kind of permit for that thing, I bet you, I don't know where Cafe Nero is, but. If we have something similar going, if we have something similar going in a window on our third street. I think someone should take a look at that.
We can switch that to permanent signs in the downtown, do require a staff level review, so we can make sure that. In historic districts, we can make sure they're following, maybe like a low cost, but there will be a cost. Uh just to make sure they're following the regulations. And then maybe, uh, I don't know, maybe add something to those di- design guidelines, but we can look at it specifically to window signs permitted in the historic district.
I just want, I would want an opportunity for the historians to know about it and, and comment, cause we have a very, very active. Historical society in town here, and they'll have something to say.
Eh eh, we, we can't make it where they just goes to, to the commission or to staff just to review, like, do we have to charge? Like, I, I'm, I think it, we're just. Where we're going with this, I feel like it's permit, 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 and. That just did, so one of, one of our issues here in this town, that's really with, with their businesses. Is we are not business friendly. At all. And when I mean we're not business friendly, we make it really hard on these people to operate, own. And get started off the ground, and I feel like that's one of the reasons why we have a lot of empty buildings. So I don't wanna discourage that, and so I do wanna mon- monitor what that sign looks like, but I don't want to have. Millions of forms being filled out, your guys' time. You know, being wasted, and all these fees that come with just trying to launch a business in San Juan, so.
I mean, if you think about it, you're saying they can have the grand opening and the closing, and then they have four times that they can do the. The signs, but then they would have to have a permit for each time that they do it, so that's. At least four times that are paying a fee, and how much is that fee going to be, and who determines the cost of that fee?
So you do have existing fees, in my opinion, they're actually very quite low, so. I wouldn't be too concerned about that, um your fees do not cover staff time at all, so your funding, planning out of your general fund.
We subsidize the planning department about half a million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four.
What, say that again?
General Fund subsidized community development about five hundred thousand dollars last fiscal year. Double, double from what it was, it comes from our budget, and we've done several hearings and workshops in the past two months.
So I know I'm an old fee if we're gonna require a permit, it's still not gonna cover staff time.
No, I get that, I just, again, it's, it's trying to make sure that we are business friendly as well, um.
The, the permits have to be business friendly, period. They should be designed so that it encourages business, uh successful business. Uh I think that's what the rules are for, so it's balanced, and everybody has an opportunity to push, push a business forward. And prevent pro- process should uh inspire that, it should be a part of that.
But the fee will, will have to use an existing fee, the fee would still be low. We could do it staff level, cause we'll have parameters, right, so staff can easily follow it, they didn't do something that's within the code, obviously, they can always appeal it. Um we can create a very user-friendly application form that they are just like. Filling out and giving me the cut sheet of their sign, because any sign has a cut sheet, and they're gonna label their dimensions on it, take a picture of their window, give me some dimensions. We could do it that way, it's quite simple. Um if you wanna require a permit for permanent window signs in the downtown. So we're not gonna require them for anywhere else, right?
Right.
I would put it in the draft, and we can strike it when it.
Yeah, when it comes back, yeah, yeah, I don't want to spend too much, we're, we're far away.
We're so far. You won't see this again for what, because I have a lot of feedback, I have to look into.
Yeah.
How do we best write it into the code, both for uh making sure we capture everything, making sure it's clear and. And, and easy for staff to understand, and then it's like creating draft language, the city attorney needs to look at it, and then we come back. Where you look at it again, we are quite far from its. In re- a real thing yet. So it's not gonna be your next meeting, it'll be wild. Okay, just to bore you with more signs.
Oh, wait, 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 um can I open this up to um general, I'm sorry, uh public comment? Uh anyone in chambers that would like to make a public comment on this category window signs? Okay, then anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to the next category. All right, what do we got?
There was some discussion about prohibited signs. And I also spoke with um staff who is in charge of handling prohibited signs, and so what we did is we came up with some. Recommendations for what should be added. I made a few kind of minor text changes, where whenever you say should in a code, it's not a requirement, we change it to shall. And some other things that we were thinking that should be added are pennants, flags, ribbon streamers, so like my example. Is this, and what I commonly see in cities is someone sticks it up, they never come down, and they say like. Biri tacos here, or smash burgers, whatever, and there'll be like twenty of them. And they never ever, I should have taken, there's a couple in my house, I should have taken a picture of it, they never come down. Uh so, it's really nice. Especially in a downtown, it does not belong there, and it really, it's just another advertising tool that never comes down, it's a temporary banner that skirts the rules. Um signs that emit noise, very rare, but there are sometimes where people have signs that talk. Uh balloons, inflatable signs, beacons and searchlights, balloons are a big deal in some cities where people constantly stick them up. They are, while meant to be attractive, can be quite the eyesore, because there are so many of them, and then they don't take care of them. Especially if you're doing in, in uh. Like a helium balloon, or they're just like a normal balloon, where they start dying towards the end of the day. Inflatable signs are like, you see those guys that like come up and down, you know, it's calling attention. And then um searchlights, um I don't think they're super popular anymore, but people will do searchlights, they're. Quite intense, some cities allow them with a permit, they just don't think in a smaller city you need a searchlight. Um and then pool signs, which are very ugly, sometimes called lollipop signs, they're. An old-fashioned type sign, now if there's some still in the city, they can continue to remain as they are, um but moving forward, it's a sign you should, we should really discourage.
I did. So, so what do you have against Biri taco signs?
I said smash burgers. The Biri taco one has been up on my house for two years.
But are the tacos good though?
My daughter says they're excellent. Um so as in terms of that, I did give you a list. I don't know if you have any changes you want to see to that list that staff is proposing, I don't know if there's any other signs you can think of that should be prohibited. Um but if you do, you know, so we can, can add them or delete or whatever you think.
That was a good list. Yeah, no, the, the balloon situation, um god, cause I feel like there is a business that does it, and maybe the candy shop. Does it, like, i- i- it just, any balloons, you can't have any balloon posted out, like on your A-frame sign or anything like that. Is that considered?
Yeah, it would be, because how you start regulating different types of balloons.
Because I thi- I, I think, some of our shops do that.
Big uh huge balloon hanging up from the top of my business, and it says, come here, come see me. But just a.
It's just a regular party-sized balloon, tied on top of an A-frame or something, like there's three of them.
I wouldn't recommend.
I think Dennis does that for the pizza factory.
I like it.
I don't know, I would recommend allowing people to start attaching stuff to A-frame signs, because then we'll run into. There's a lot of other things attached to them, especially, you know, we have the downtown situation, but if you wanna allow, and I. I can see what the diameter of a normal balloon is, we could allow balloons of a certain diameter, diameter.
Yeah, like a twelve-inch balloon or whatever.
During the day of.
Uh it just seems overkill.
Whatever hours, if you wanna allow, but I think we need to be specific, because again, what happens is, if you don't prohibit balloons. And I'm surprised no one's doing it now, you will have like little ships that float above a business and say the name on it, that's a balloon. You will have um all sorts of wacky balloons that people put up in other cities, they will eventually make their way here. Yeah, car, so have a lot.
The one thing that you, the one thing that you can also think of is environmentally safe. Balloons, you know, are not. Recommended anymore.
You mean Mylar?
Their balloons.
Uh I, I think she's referring to Mylar ones that don't ever disintegrate.
Yeah, for me, I'm, my concern is the balloons, I, I don't mind the balloons, I, I see them, I think it looks like. Yeah, I, I, I see it, and it looks nice, and lets me know, hey, you guys are there. Um but other than that, everything else seems fine.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's a pretty comprehensive list, I think you did a good job, so thank you.
Do you wanna just allow like the standard-type balloon of a certain?
Yeah, the twelve-inch regular, whatever you wanna call it.
Okay, I'll, I'll think about it, cause there are some that get a little bit bigger and they're more reusable. And I think if we're gonna allow balloons, let's allow those too, but let's prohibit the other like flying in the air.
Yeah, like if, yeah, this, I mean.
Okay, well, I'll figure that one out.
Some business could be selling balloons to begin with.
There you go. Yeah, other than that, everything else seems good, like um.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, those little flag things are a nice word, I'm not gonna, I'm not.
Well, pizza guys do that at Crust and Christmas out there every week.
And this would apply to everyone, right, food trucks, so it was not just.
So it's gonna apply to everyone, so. Uh. Food trucks would be included, so they cannot stick up like they're pennant, I know sometimes they won't do that, like they'll pull in. To their spot, and all of a sudden they have like flags waving, flag banner things.
They're doing that now.
Um that would be pro- prohibited, but now we have the expansion on the A-frames, it'll probably.
Yeah, they can use an A-frame, which is fine.
That's right, yeah. Or a searchlight.
Yeah, what do we have against searchlights, come on.
Batman searchlight.
Okay.
Or the taco.
I don't know if this is the last one, but. Okay, so another one that came.
Oh, wait, 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 sorry, 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 public comment. Hold on, all right, public comment in chambers, anybody? Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mrs. B.
Welcome.
Um, I'm a little confused about the last part, instead about the. Signs and the food trucks and, what about on private property? Are you including? Food trucks on private property?
Yes.
Yes, it'll, it, so it's a prohibited sign, it's prohibited for everyone.
I guess that's trying to get clarification, okay. Um I'll wait till next.
Okay.
Any more comments from the public?
This is Christina.
Yes, welcome.
The, what do you mean by flags?
These, these little flag things, these pennants, I don't know what else to call them.
Okay, because I had issues with the city about what. A, the definition of a flag. And um.
Good point.
I have. Two flags, that one is attached to the building, and one is attached to private property, which is the awning. And they promote my business. And they give people who are walking down the sidewalk, ideas of what I have. So they're small, they're seven feet above, I'm going again, I'm going with the ordinance of what they should be. And that they're not hitting anyone on the head, so, and they're light, they're cheap signage, and but yet it's effective. So I would like to know. What flags, what's the definition of that, because?
Don't have one now. So part of the, part of the problem with the zoning ordinance is there's just not a lot of definitions, so it makes it hard for me. Because if I can't interpret it.
Well, does this have a, the natural name, like this is flag have a particular?
I was gonna say, you can flag, you see those things everywhere, they have all the, just say none of those.
Yeah.
Whatever they're called.
This is hard, because you can include pictures in a zoning ordinance, but I don't know that our platform allows us to do so. We can um come to a word definition and then have a handout that has a picture for what these things mean again, to help people out. If we wanna allow small-type flags as like an advertising piece, that is up to you, but it goes for everyone then. And how many signs do we want?
I do know that, um I do know that there are several people that have flags, Mrs. B have a flag that says open. Um there are people who hang flags off of um their buildings on Third Street to celebrate holiday. Or for to decorating their building. So, and they're, they're the small flags, they're not these, I used to have these, and it was for my grand opening. And the city allowed me to have them for thirty days, it was effective, it was great, um I took them down. And they did allow me to have them put up again during events. To draw attention to the building. To my space, because like you had mentioned, the tents cover up our entrances, so um. Might wanna consider that again, if there's. If there's an event in town and because Third Street is closed and all of the canopies are up, we're invisible. So how do we promote ourselves? And this was one of the ways for me to do it. So that's falls in with the event stuff. I know this is kinda getting, but this is a business perspective. And the small flags, like I'm saying, it's, they're effective for me to keep my business open.
Would you say we could allow something like this during a special event?
I mean, I think that's what we were kinda getting at earlier, is we wanna allow a little bit more leeway.
Yeah, so maybe like, special event, then you're maybe allowed that.
Defined by what, like we'll have to define it, right? So where we allow maybe a a relaxing of the requirements during those special events and they get, and it's literally they would only get it during the hours of the event if you wanted to do it, or where we could relax them in the downtown since they are covered and we wanna give them some more. I think that's entirely fair, it's a tem- very temporary nature, it's to allow them to advertise that they are open or whatever it is during special events, and only during special events, we can allow for that within the code to give them some greater flexibility, but if you wanna allow flags and the definition of most flags is the, in most cities is, uh, like holiday uh, the American flag, California flag, and there's usually like a couple other exceptions, but they are not typically for advertising.
I opened my business in nineteen ninety eight. And on my poles in front of my business, all my building were flag holders. They've been there so long, they're almost embedded into the wood. So I have utilized those since nineteen ninety eight. Everything from the American flag to open flag to shopping is more cost effective than therapy. Anything to let people know I'm here seven days a week. Just driving down the street, especially if it's hot and you have your doors closed for air conditioning purposes. It looks like Death Valley here, there's nothing. So if I have a flag out, people say, oh, there's life in San Juan. So when you say flag, then only on special occasion, every day my business opens is a special occasion to me because I'm paying. So to limit me to just holidays it doesn't make sense to me. So if you can help me out with this.
Yeah, she's got a point. So, yeah, is this gonna limit what kind of flags, all flags, or are we gonna be particular with that type of? And, and maybe that is allowed during a special event, like you said, just for that, but the other flags, are, are we are we getting rid of other flags, because actually you're right, I've actually seen on a bunch of other businesses that have their flags, I think the movie in store likes to play one. Um, I just don't know.
It's entirely up to you, I mean, again, it's number of signs you end up allowing for business. So it's what do you want that visual quality to be, it's up to you. I don't you know, there's some that will be the worst case scenario, they will have a temporary banner, they will have window signs, they will have a flag and they will have an A-frame sign. So it's, it's hard to regulate signs because you will have people that will, they advertise appropriate. And you have people that will take advantage of every mile you give them, so it's up to you, um, and how you wanna allow, what you wanna do. I don't have a particular uh, recommendation on just up like a flag type situation, if you wanna allow it, um.
You, we would have to have a, a definition as to what's permissible in it. And what is not.
I would agree that if you want to, I would say exempt, um, federal and state flags.
Yeah.
Size. Any, any sort of, uh, whatever, and e- even the city flag. But after that, I think you might wanna think about what size can they have, if you wanna allow, what size can they have and what can they have on?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Maderos, is that it seems like this whole topic is suffering from a lack of definitions and people are thinking different things, I'm sure in each of our minds, as to what constitutes a flag and is it just advertising on some kind of fabric or pliable material? Uh, what is a flag, how big is a flag, what are we talking about, so I think we have to give, I mean, these, what are these things called? You probably buy these on the internet. Whatever they're called, yeah, none of those.
The problem is, is that some of these things, because they look so similar in what I might call it, you might call it something different, so that's why definitions come into play. A good definition in any zoning ordinance you need anyways, but it really cues people to what you're talking about, so, um. If you wanna allow flags.
Is this a flag?
That's not a flag.
Okay. Is it a pennant? I think of the, uh, when the Mets won, when a pennant, when I think of pennant, but, um. When the county redid their, um, sign ordinance, there wasn't any for those things, because we disallowed them with the county also. So anyway, I think we just need some definitions and what we can all agree on, this is what we're talking about before we can even get to the point of this, not that.
I think if.
Some of these are not that, because, because it, at the end of the day, it's advertising. And what, that's all we've been talking about, whether it's A-frames or temporary window size or permanent window size, I mean, all this stuff is advertising, so what is an advertise, what does advertising do, it promotes a business for a custom, customers and foot traffic and, and what have you. And if you look at advertising needs of, I'm only thinking of the, uh, the historic district, frankly, again. But if you look at the business needs of those enterprises, how do we meet those advertising needs in a way that balances against the historic nature of the district? And, and its qualities, yet the needs of the businesses to remain in business, that is a balancing. And we wanna allow some advertising, obviously, but we don't, but there has to be limits to it, otherwise we're gonna lose the historic districts, not the historic at all. Um, in addition to the fact that the buildings aren't kept up very well.
Yeah.
It's gonna look even worse, so, um, but before I prepare to talk about what those limitations should be, I think we need better definitions as this particular topic that we're kinda commonly referring to as flags or pennants or something, I don't know what we mean.
Just for, for me, because I can't, otherwise I'm creating five hundred definitions here. Want to allow people to have flags that say open.
A flag that says open.
For me, I don't mind that, I mean, just, I, I'm telling you, if we, we don't, if we limit it too much around here, these businesses won't get.
How big?
Well, I, I, we can just, we can figure that one out, do you wanna allow people to advertise the name of their business on a flag?
Permanent, like every day? These are all these distractions.
Yeah, my concern is I don't wanna see businesses struggling and then they leave and now we got another empty building, because we weren't business friendly. And now, and now rather than having a tacky downtown historic area, we have a deserted one. Actually, yeah, I can, I, I can name two, I can name Brewery Twenty Five. I can name, um, Shar's Boutique, I can name and both in Hogs Peak and. But still, I don't.
There are a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into whether a business is successful on Third Street or not, and a lot of them just were poor business concepts. To start with, sales weren't enough to generate enough revenue to even pay rent, much less pay the owner something, because they'd have to sell eight hundred of these a week to pay rent, you wonder if they even did the math on that. And I remember, I don't know, my experience has never been that the businesses made them so unfriendly that it's driven businesses away or kept them from coming here.
One of the things that I was thinking of is we could standardize the size of a badge. Butt flag badge, a flag that, um, first just opens. For the word, and with the business name under, I mean, the business is the business. I mean, uh, one should complement the other as far as the flag, the type of flag that you wave out there. But if you're gonna have an open sign, I would think that maybe you would standardize the size of it and the color or what have you, so that does kinda send a signal out there that we're open for business. And anything other than that, um, you know, what seems to work if you're gonna put it on the building or on top of the building. Uh, I think that, um, if it brings success to a business, then we need to consider that and see how we can, uh, allow that to work, yet at the same time, respect the historical district and what have you. There, there might be a way to do it, what is it? And I think definition and size and things like that, and what's allowed versus what's not allowed.
So I would say.
We, we, we might start with that.
I would say for this one, because we seem to be a little stumped. When we come back, when I come back with the ordinance, we'll have this as like a separate topic, we can suggest a definition and then we can alter it as we need to. Uh, and then figure it out from there and figure out what we really wanna allow. I would say you probably don't wanna allow a business name because it's another way of screwing the rules, right? I have a big sign up for. Bob's Burgers, and then I have a flag that says Bob's Burgers. How many flags are we gonna allow people, can they have twenty flags? So we'll all keep it in mind and we'll maybe this one's more of a deeper dive when we come back with the other regulations where we can really nail this one down, since we're kind of looking for a definition and looking for some more information on that, I think we can make that happen more easily, um, with some more.
I like that, uh, sorry, did I open up a public comment on this one? No, okay, well, let's, uh, any more comments, concerns from our commission?
Um, I've had my hand raised for a little while here.
Sorry, sorry, we can't see you from, all the presentations up.
Well, I, I cannot hear anything that you all have said about that, I heard here and there about the flags and so on, but from what I can, I'm trying to read here, what everyone is saying, why don't you just, um, take out that part, take out item M for now because it sounds like the rest is okay with everybody, with the exception of the balloons. But, you know, take out M, table that and, and move on.
Yeah, well, that, it was that, or we were recommending that, um, Erica would come back with, um, some definitions for us later so that she can, um, kind of present something and then we can tailor it at another time.
The other thing too, can we ask the public to define what flags, what flags are appropriate and which are not? Can we get a list from, from the local businesses? To, to help us define and of, as far as sizes, or maybe, um, a photo a photo of it, kind of a thing, in, in its place and what have you, so we can kind of dwindle it down to where we need to go with this.
This is, um, anyone can always email me if they have thoughts, comments. I don't know, three weeks down the road, oh, wait, I, I have a comment, you can always email me, we'll take it into consideration and it'll be part of um, our next, next discussion, if we can, um, at all possible. We have zoning ordinance amendments that are coming, because we have housing elements, we're gonna require stuff, talk about ADUs, we have a number of things we have to do. And so I don't know if it's possible, Liz could tell me, but we could have a section on our website that kinda lets people know what we're looking into, we'll put the staff report up there when it's available. Uh, maybe a draft ordinance ahead of time, so they have ample time to, to review and provide comments if they would like to. But we can get more public outreach going, once we kinda take the next step um, in this, and then likewise for the rest of them that are coming up, because you're gonna see a lot coming up, especially the housing.
Yeah, with that draft ordinance, once it comes through, I would like to do a workshop with the businesses, just to make sure that we're capturing what their needs are. Since this will affect them.
Yeah, and by putting it online, really some people won't show up at a public hearing, but they will email me or call me. So it gives, gives people, um, another opportunity to provide feedback, so we can hear from them.
Got it, alright, well, further with, um. Um, yeah, any other commissioner comments, no? Alright, with.
Please speak closer to the microphone.
Oh, yeah, with, uh, is there any other comments, concerns from the commission?
No.
No, okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up to public comments. Uh, any comments from Chambers?
Uh, this is Christina, the, um, I like the definition where these are pennants, not flags. And the, the flag that I have is, um, one of them I take down every day. Um, it's attached to the building, the other, and both of them are three feet by three feet, and they're small. And the other one is attached to the awning. And the reason why I have it attached to the awning is because the lettering on my building is hard to see because of the awning. So you have to factor that in. There are, when people walk by the building, they don't see anything, it's, it's too much of a flat surface. It's a one D scenario, but when you have a flag that's on the sidewalk and they can see it and they look up and it's colorful and it adds to what Mrs. B was saying, it's like there's life in town. Because every time Monday comes around, people walk into my store, how come everybody's closed, how come the town is dead, how come no one's open? And I'm standing there going, I'm open, and, and, but there's several businesses in this town that are open seven days a week, and if you go through them, you can count them. And if they had some sort of motion that lets people know, hey, I'm here, I'm open. I don't see why there's any harm in that, it's not gonna deface the town and the historic town, actually it might enhance it because there were flags back in those days too. It might not be the same type of advertisement flag, but it was still flags that allow the people to know that we're still alive here. So.
Thank you.
This is B. I just wanted to say that I sell flags, and I've sold them for twenty years. My flags are standard size, just like the American flag, they're all the same size. And so when I put up a flag, it's not something as overly large, uh, too small. It's standard, just like the American flag, so take that into consideration, it's not something outlandish. And classy.
Thank you. Um, any comments, um, or any further comments in chambers? Or any con, got it, and any comments on, um, Zoom? Alright, thank you, alright, so I think we can move on to the next category on this wonderful presentation that Erica's put forward.
Another topic of discussion was string lights and people putting them around a window. Um, you indicated that you would like to prohibit them, I do wanna point out that temporary holiday lights are allowed as a decoration in our code. I have no definition of that, I don't know what constitutes a holiday, I don't know how many times or how many days you can put them up. Um, if you wanted to prohibit, I could include it as a sign type, because you know, it might be easier to find, we also have a section of the code under lighting, we could go under that as well, but again, entirely up to you on the string lights. Um, but I just need to know, do you really want to prohibit them around doors and windows in commercial districts? Or do you wanna continue allowing them as a holiday decoration?
Is that, are, when you say as a holiday decoration, are you implying a time duration?
Says it's during holidays, I think you get thirty days, but it doesn't say what a holiday is, so is a holiday Saint Patrick's Day, is a holiday is Saint Gudamayo is a holiday, I don't know.
How did you mean it when you said it?
I don't know what it means, to be honest with you, so I don't know. There's no definition. It would probably be easier if we allowed a holiday decoration that you only got a period of. It would probably be easier if we allowed a holiday decoration that you only got a period of thirty days per year and you could pick your holiday. Because that would be us telling people what their holiday is, but I just don't know.
Oh, this one's gonna be hard. Well, I mean, I, I get it, like, I actually run. I take a run in downtown all the time and at night I still see some businesses. That still have Christmas string lights up. And I don't know whether I consider that tacky or what you would call that, or if it gives our town some charm, but. A doozy for me, um. I don't know, commissioners.
It's not, it's not, it's not hard for me and I think we need to distinguish between what we all can agree are traditional holiday lights, like Christmas lights. Around windows during Christmas time. We have a Christmas parade. We have. The lights, the, the things that the city does around the lamp posts. We know what the holidays are and we know what Christmas decorations are. That's one thing. What I think this agenda item is addressing are not Christmas lights, but what is referred to as string lights, which go around the outside. Perimeters of a number of windows in the historic districts that stay eliminated all night long. And I think they're in various colors, green and red and so forth. And I think it detracts from the historical nature of the district, from the historical integrity of the buildings itself. And just overall produces an uh, an ambiance or an aesthetic that is not desirable for the historic district. So I would vote to prohibit them as described. That's my vote and my thought.
So just the flashy stuff on the windows then?
Correct.
So if the lights were all the same or uniform and they're not green or red or other brilliant colors. Would that be okay? Because if the merchants and businesses are saying that any kind of attraction to. Their business is helpful. String lights that are all the same, just lights up the historical district or the main town, does that hurt anything?
Well, I mean, all, all of these things have to exist on some kind of continuum or balance is achieved. So if the only criteria is it's helpful for business, well, so are flashing neon signs and maybe speakers that play music. And I mean, all kinds of things. Look at, look at the Las Vegas Strip. I'm, I, I, please, look at the Las Vegas Strip. That's maximizing. That, that's an example of business entre- enterprises maximizing attraction. Come into Bellagio, come into the wind, come into and, and look what it looks like. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that our third street is the same thing as Frank Sinatra Drive in, in Vegas. But we therefore have to have some kind of limits. I think these multi-colored string lights around the. Window openings of these businesses and historic businesses in, at the historic districts detract from the historic ambiance. And I think this should.
But that's what I'm saying. If it's not green or red or some kind of flashy, but they're all the same as in. I don't know what you call them, um.
All white?
All, all white. Let's say, okay, all, 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 all white. Would that not, would that not be okay?
What if it was a warm white?
I mean, you're asking me these hypotheticals and I'm not the. I'm, 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 I'm just suggesting that we have to balance the nature and of the historic district and its aesthetic. Against the business interests of our merchants. And I understand their need to draw attention to themselves, but businesses and people can do some crazy stuff to attract attention to themselves. Some of which we don't wanna allow. By definition, so there's, there is some limit. What is that limit? I'm suggesting that multi-colors. String lights around these windows is exceeds that limit. Would that, would my feeling be different if they were all white? I don't know. I'd have to see it. If it was too bright and too illuminated and just was really stark and stood out. Maybe I wouldn't be happy about that either, but I think it'd be an improvement over red and green and blue or whatever else they are now.
Right, but that, it, it was, I was just posing a question, because the other question that I would have is. Um, how long are we gonna keep the street light? Uh, light, street lamps lighted with the holiday decorations. It's been there since the holidays. It's now July. They're still on. They're still on.
That's what I'm saying.
I thought you said Rotary is gonna take those down.
We're not in charge of those. We're in charge of the saints.
Oh, you mean the halos? Those.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a little tacky down there.
Those halo things are still around the streetlights?
So if you're going to make a distinction or some kind of regulation, then the city itself should abide by those.
One, one person at a time. The city manager was speaking. Go ahead.
In, in past years, they've, they've tried green and pink for Valentine's or Easter, purple for Easter. They've tried other seasonal things.
What are you referring to now?
They're called halos. And they originate from the spirit of San Juan, I think, the same as the decorated corner at the bank building. That, that's part of that same effort.
So is, so was there a proposal that I missed that uh suggested the halos be maintained on those street lamps you're around?
No, I think um they, I haven't had any conversation personally with the spirit of San Juan regarding the halos.
Hmm, okay.
Is it fair to say that they, as of today, the halo should be down and just haven't been taken down yet?
Usually they come down after the holidays.
Yeah, okay. Been up there. So that's what I was saying. I was like, I've been running, there's Christmas light.
No, we can't. So we can't use the halos as an example because they're still up, but they shouldn't be, so.
I understand. So my, my thing is, how about this? We meet, if, if I could propose something, we meet in the middle. Yeah, I, I could see how the lights can be, it can make the historic district not look so historic, right? We have all this flashiness going on. And during the day, I, you know, I feel like I rarely see it just because of daytime and there's something there. Most of our businesses are closed at night. So why isn't there just a, uh, an ordinance that says you can't have them flashing in the middle of the night or at, at night at all, you know?
Turned on?
Yeah, like turned on. Like maybe during the day while they're there and they're operating, maybe it's on, but, and that's when it doesn't look. Terrible and then at night, most, all our businesses are closed at night. I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I run down Third Street. And they're closed. And so maybe yes, at night it does look tacky, seeing it looks like whoever said it looks like a red light district or whatever. Um, but if the businesses are closed, then why, why even have them on then? Like, it's not like you're open. So maybe there's just an ordinance that says they're off. So the businesses could still have their stuff, but it doesn't look tacky, like you're saying.
So I think Sutter Creek, which is very similar to our downtown, that it's very historic and it's ti- it's small. I believe their requirement is low wattage, non-blinking white lights and they allow them.
Because you wanna, you've got a historic building that's a hundred years old and you want lighting that matches a hundred year old theme.
Exactly.
Is my thought and it comes down to design guidelines.
Yeah. And to, again, there's always going to be people that push the boundaries, right? And so unfortunately, we have to do a zoning ordinance to prevent the worst case scenario. So if there's no regulations, we could have large bulbs around a window flashing at all times, neon or whatever it is. That really doesn't um go to the character of historic downtown district and it really doesn't fit in with San Juan. So. I can look up some language where we can include it. The next time you see this, this is not an end all be.
Yeah, this is just, we're just drafting.
We're just giving me some direction, so I have a place to start with, because I really had nothing, other than if you, like, staff will probably um. I would prefer to have some regulations about maintenance of signs and what to do if a business goes out of business, so a sign doesn't stay up in eternity once they're gone. So there, there are things that staff will recommend, but for the most part, that's just based on experience and how to enforce things. But this other stuff is really you and you giving me direction on what you wanna see in these signs. So I think with string lights, it looks like maybe we kind of wanna allow with a little restriction. So I can come up with some options or just like a draft language and we can pick it apart at the next one.
I think again here, we, on the list, what, what, what is appropriate, what is not? We already know that during the holidays, it seems to be a given that certain lights are allowed during the holidays and what have you. Which has been appropriate throughout the years. And here again, we're looking towards business um support from the city. And I think we just need to come with, with, what's permissible and what's not. I mean, not permitted, I mean, what's allowed. A list that says, these are the types that we're looking for as far as any control goes, that's what we're pushing for and these are not. And we can go with that, go with another list.
And I don't want you to think that if we adopted all these, the, this amendment tomorrow, and we have all these rules, that we can never change it again. I don't buy by that theory, because the zoning ordinance should be periodically looked at. The world changes all the time. And we could include a regulation, let's say we prohibit flags and everyone come, uh, it becomes an issue and people want flags. Or let's say we allow flags and they become a huge issue, because everyone has millions of flags. You always want to keep your zoning ordinance up to date, and if that means periodic viewing it, if that means changing it is necessary, that is the way you should look at it. Not a, we will make this decision and that is your decision forever. Likewise, the state tells you, you have to change your zoning ordinance all the time. It's just a constantly evolving document that evolves with. Things within the city, things within the state. New signs will be created within the next year, I'm sure. And then we'll have more discussions that need to be had. So if something does not work, even once we adopt this. We always have the ability to go back and change it again. Of course, it's staff time, it's your time, but it's not the end all be all.
I, I, I like that idea of maybe it's the white lights or the warm lights, if you wanted to have something that lit up your sign. Cause I mean, if we already allow internally lit or whatever it was, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with it, but you. I, I would agree, maybe the flashy stuff, the colors, I mean, that could, I could see how that takes away from the historic. Um, nature of downtown. So um, I would think that would be a, a happy medium between. You know, completely taking it away versus, you know, again, I'm, I'm all about helping our businesses in any way we can. But also having what Dan DeBries has mentioned, having a good balance.
I'm not interested in seeing that Seto Creek language on those white lights you referenced.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're not or you are?
I am interested in seeing what that Seto Creek language.
I think it was Sutter Creek. I could be wrong, but I'm almost.
Better be Sutter Creek, Erica. That's what you represented to this body.
We might discover a light that really enhances uh historical buildings. And that light will, will project uh enough energy in, in a way to generate more business. Because more people are attracted to our night vision when it comes to the type, the way we like the city up. So, so my, so that, that might be an advertising itself.
But you guys just went away with spotlights. I'm just kidding.
So, so my, my training in um Cal State North, which was always the Disneyland Main Street. What do you want your Disneyland Main Street to look like? There's always been, been the, the bar.
What's the ordinance for Disney down, not Main Street? No, just kidding.
Leave that to Mickey Mouse and Goofy. And, and they were always pushing it outside the. Disneyland has been a leader in any kind of architecture when it comes to preserving history and what have you. It's interesting.
There are numerous Disney operated both downtown, I think Celebration Florida and others, and they have very strict requirements. Very strict guidelines.
What are you referring to now?
Uh, so like Celebration Florida is Disney owned, like.
Celebration what?
Florida.
Celebration Florida.
It's like a Disney planned community with the downtown with a mixed use. So like they created San Juan Batista on their own. Uh, their requirements are very specific and very rigid. They become anti-business because they have an image. And a specific image that they are projecting with the downtown and it's clean, not a lot of signage. Very limited in what you can do and they can do it because they were the property owners for Celebration for many years until they sold it to another company. So that is a example of a very onerous restriction that you would find with Disney.
Well, you don't have to go to Florida or the Disney Corporation, Carmel by the Sea.
There you go.
And Ocean Street on Carmel was voted by ConNas Travelers the number one destination place in America. Think about that. Martha Stewart, I'm Martha Stewart. Um, can't even talk right now, I'm so tired. Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard. Not Martha Stewart, Martha's Vineyard, the other Martha. No, there's some, there's some, at Connecticut, I mean, there's some really nice uh. Towns and, and Ocean Street in Carmel, and there are Nazis over there about what they allow and don't allow and so forth, but, but they kept it, they keep it nice. And a rising tide floats all boats and they're, what, what is, what does rent cost on Ocean Street in Carmel for a merchant? Cause it's so beautiful. So anyway, I think we are um pursuing the same goal, which is to make San Juan Batista as beautiful as it can be. I think the historic district, second only to our mission, is a crown jewel. And I think it's the golden goose that we will continue to produce golden eggs as long as we take care of it.
Agreed.
Night and day.
All right, so um with that being said, any more comments or? Any more comments from our commissioners or, yeah, or I'm tired too. Who else? Okay, well, moving on here, any public comments from chambers?
Yeah, this is Christina.
Welcome.
Uh, first of all, I forgot to mention I want one of those blowing things that go like this, you know, so uh, that's not permitted.
You know, I think, yeah.
But you can do that.
Yeah. But if you put a spotlight in it, then maybe it gets away with it.
So I like the idea of, uh, so I'm from a small town and please don't take the halos down. I think they're amazing. I think that it, it enhances the evening and the night of, of the town. Um, I have those string lights around my window and I'm more than willing to turn them to a soft white. To enhance the downtown, um, as well as make my store visible. As well as people are walking around downtown at night. Um, I think we should actually add more string lights that are white. To, to give it an ambiance, I like your word charm. And to be able to have people who have the parklets to sit out and enjoy an evening outside. And they can look down Third Street in its glowing. I, it, we need to do something to bring people here, not to take them away. So that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Every day in San Juan Batista could be a holiday.
That would be nice. Um, Mrs. B.
Welcome.
I um, I don't use string lights. I use strip lights, which adhere to the inside of the window. And they come with a remote control. Saint Patrick's Day, I can make the lights green. Valentine's Day, I can make them red. So there are options, or you can have them white. So let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. The lights around the window says, this is a business. And there is something in this window you might wanna look at. But if it's dark, it's kinda hard to see. So, and I saw something in the packet about LED lights. Um, I was gonna ask what was the opposition to LED lights?
I don't remember now, but I think it's referring to LED signs.
Can you please speak closer to the microphone?
I think that is referring to LED signs, which would be. An illuminated sign that flashes words. I don't think it's referring to lights. I'm not sure.
While you're looking, I'm, I'm hoping that's the case, because LED, we're a green business. And we were told that LED is energy saving and good for the environment and all of that, so. We gotta focus on things that make sense. And illuminating our store windows. I, I'm not, I didn't start a business to be a nonprofit. And right now, that's what I am here in San Juan. And I'm, my stores are open seven days a week. And it's like a ghost town most of the days. And you need to remember, ghosts don't pay taxes. We do. So we need to work together to make this a viable business community. Because people are putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into investing in homes here. When there are hardly any services, we don't have a bank, we have a post office, thank God, we have a supermarket. But our little shops are the only other things that are here. And one day, some of these people are gonna wake up and say, God, I paid a million dollars for this house and. What's here? Because businesses are closing. You just need to think about it.
Thank you.
So, right now, LED display signs are prohibited, so that would be your like blinking open, you're like running. Whatever, you can illuminate with background, backlit LED, um, there are, like she mentioned, there are. You can buy them on Amazon, you can buy them anywhere, it's a strip, they perfectly stick into a window. So they fit better than like a string light, and they go around a window, and you can change the color, but um, they are low wattage. Um, you could make them blink, but obviously you can make that illegal, I'm not concerned with, if we're allowing string lights, you might as well allow. LED lights around a window, I mean, I don't think we wanna allow neon tubing or something, we'll have to be very specific. But again, the code prohibition that we have right now is really those. LED lights, they blink, they flash, they run a constant like message, you can have it say whatever you want, those are prohibited in most cities.
Alright, well, um, can't get it back to our commissioners, any other comments, questions, concerns?
No, I just wanted to say, in closing on this topic, I just wanna extend our thanks to Erica. For the work that you have done and the work that lies ahead of you, which seems considerable, and we look forward to seeing your drafts and working.
I'll just move on very briefly, so your next step is you will not see me on this for a little while, it's a lot of work.
Got it.
We'll work on getting a little, something on the website, people can email me, call me, whatever they wanna do. I'm gonna take your direction, start drafting, like I said, the city attorney needs to look at it. Um, but then you're still gonna review it during a set session, you're not making a decision at the next time we meet. And most likely, where I have a question, we'll call that out and say, this is what I've drafted, or here's two options, or what do you think, or whatever it is, but. Um, we solve ways to go.
Alright, um, so is there more to this? Oh, okay.
A good question for the city manager, does the planning commission still have bylaws and do they say that no new agenda item should be called past nine o'clock? Do you know, Don?
Oh man, like, 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 let's just save ourselves the, the hassle here, I, I move. Or, or, or would love to see a motion to see if we could table the mobile food ordinance and the Vision twenty thirty-five for another. Another planning commission meeting, just because. We're, I'm sure we're gonna go through a bunch of stuff too. Uh, I don't know, how did my, how did the commissioners feel?
I agree.
So, so moved. Well, let me ask the city manager.
Hold on a second.
Well, hold on, before we, uh.
Yeah, you can take a vote on that.
Need to do something.
There's no urgency on.
Okay, if there's no urgency, then absolutely.
And before I do that, just to be fair for those. Thank you. Um, for those in chambers and for those on Zoom, um, before we, we take this, uh, we table everything. Um, if there was anyone for a comment that they wanted to make, are they here for, are they, are they here, is anyone wanna make a comment?
Thank you.
Not, then I would like to table everything, cuz I, I hate when you go to city council, you wait. All the, these hours, only to find out your thing just got tabled. So if no one is online or anybody has a comment, then yes, let's go ahead and take.
So, the most, do you have the motion to continue on a second for both agenda items?
So with a motion from Commissioner DeBries and a second from Commissioner Maderos, we would like to um. Table items four, B and C for the next planning commission meeting on August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Calling for the motion, uh, Commissioner DeBries?
Yes.
Commissioner Maderos?
Yes.
Commissioner Pisano?
Yes.
And Chair Aranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, moving on to agenda item number five, comments, um, any comments from our planning commissioners?
No, thank you.
I'll go ahead.
I have none, um, Commissioner Pisano, do you have any comments?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it, but I wanted to um, just. Address a, a question I had about the housing elements discussions that you had last week where I wasn't able to attend because of. My illness. Would this be an appropriate time?
Could Don answer your questions about that?
I'd be happy to meet with you, uh, Ida, and, and go through it with you, um, there was really nothing new. The conversation was mostly about labeling and, and whether or not an affordable housing committee was needed, or whether that could be uh. Co, co-part of the, the planning commission, that's really the only topic out of the, all the revisions that we focused on.
Okay, alright, well, thank you very much. I, I'll, I'll meet with you when I'm negative.
Sure, thank you.
And then I'm gonna be moving on to uh, five B, Community Development Director, any comments?
Doing projects, do we, do we have any applications coming forward?
I do not, we have one in the very preliminary stages, which is the San Bernardino Health Foundation, but they're.
Way, way off, and, and, and complete application.
I have nothing that's complete.
Okay, there you go, so nothing on the present.
And then moving on to five C, city manager, any reports, anything we should be advised of?
I'm all out of comments.
Okay, well.
Thank you for your hard work tonight, that was not an easy task.
Yes, I was just gonna say, Erica, I mean, this was um. Hurty, no, don't be sorry, this was really good, and um, you, you did some amazing work and thank you for taking all the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job, this, this was amazing, so. Um, with that being said, then the next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four, it is nine seventeen P M. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.